Good evening. Welcome to the City Council's November 10th Special and Regular City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public, participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce staff and City Council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council Member Kat Carlton, City Council Member Betsy Nash, and City Council Member Ray Mueller. Staff present include our City Manager, Starla Jerome Robinson, our interim City Attorney, Cara Silver, and our City Clerk Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, vice mayor, members of the City Council. Again, echoing a warm welcome to the November 11th Menlo Park City Council meeting. At this time, we do ask that the City Council members remain on screen for the duration of the meeting, engaging their own webcams and microphones. For staff and presenters, they will engage webcams and microphone when making presentations, as well as responding to any questions from the City Council. For members of the public who wish to speak on an agendized item after the mayor calls for public comment, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. That will alert us that you have a comment and I'll have the ability to open up your microphone and you can address the City Council at that time. Includes the introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. At this time, are there any informational items the City Council will be pulling for discussion at the end of the meeting? Okay. The next item is a report from closed session. And our interim City Attorney, Cara Silver, and our City Manager will do the report out.
Good morning, or good afternoon, sorry. Starla Jerome Robinson, City Manager, and I'm reporting out on the council's closed session of Friday, November 6th. The council took action at this closed session. Councilmember Mueller moved to send a recommendation from the current City Council to the future City Council to hire the law firm of Jorgensen, Siegel, McClure, and Flagle. Councilmember Carlton seconded the motion, which passed on a three to two vote, with Mayor Carlton and Councilmember Nash dissenting.
Mayor Taylor.
Mayor Taylor.
Thank you. That's for the November 6th, and Ms. Cara Silver will report out for the November 10th.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The council met in closed session just now and in connection with an anticipated litigation matter, and there's no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda items. Non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general direction. And Ms. Heron, at this time, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So for any member of the public who wishes to speak on an item that is not on our agenda under the item G, public comment, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the City Council at this time. This will be the final call for general public comment for items not on the agenda. Mayor Taylor, I am seeing no hands raised. On one more comment, I opted to speak during the introduction. Any web form public comment, as well as presentations for this agenda, have been attached to the agenda available for the City Council and public view.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And at this time, we will move on to item H1, which is a proclamation for Ruby Bridges' Walk to School Day. And Ms. Heron, it says on my notes to take public comment on this item. So would you like to do that now or after I read the proclamation?
We can see if there's any public comment at this time. So if any member of the public wishes to speak on item H1, please engage that hand feature, top right side of your screen. Have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council at this time. Final call for any comments on H1 regarding the proclamation for Ruby Bridges' Walk to School Day. And seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Whereas Ruby Bridges is an icon of the American Civil Rights Movement, who at the age of six years old in 1960 became the youngest member to integrate public schools in the American South. And whereas segregation continued to exist in various states despite the Supreme Court of the United States' 1954 ruling in Brown versus the Board of Education barring any state laws allowing racial segregation in public schools. And whereas Ruby Bridges was the lone student of her group of African-American students to integrate William France Elementary School in the city of New Orleans on November 14th, 1960, being escorted by four federal agents while bravely walking amongst protesters full of virile... And whereas the San Mateo County Board of Education adopted a resolution in 2019 declaring November 14th, or the following Wednesday, if it should fall on a weekend, to be henceforth annually known as Ruby Bridges' Walk to School Day in the county of San Mateo to celebrate the spirit of inclusivity. And whereas, up to 100 community members participated in Ruby Bridges' Walk to School Day on November 14th, 2019 in the Bell Haven neighborhood. And whereas, the city of Menlo Park's Safe Routes to School program encourages children to bicycle and walk to school to develop lifelong skills and independence in their community. And whereas, the county of San Mateo will participate in its second annual countywide Ruby Bridges' Walk to School Day, partnering with local schools and the community in promoting walking to school in inclusive communities. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that I, Cecilia Taylor, Mayor of the city of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim November 18th, 2020, as Ruby Bridges' Walk to School Day in the city of Menlo Park. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Under this consent calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business in one motion unless a City Council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. Ms. Heron, at this time, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So for any member of the public who wishes to speak on agendized items I-1 through I-3 for the consent calendar, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council at this time. So this will be the final call for any public comment on our consent calendar, items I-1 through I-3. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'm moved.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Carlton and a second by City Councilmember Mueller to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further City Council discussion or question? Seeing none, I will call vote, City Councilmember Carlton.
Hi.
City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on our agenda is regular business. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. The first item is J1, consider the funding options for the city requested work to accompany Facebook's offer to rebuild community facilities located at 100 to 110 Terminal Avenue and the plan for interim services during construction. To introduce this item is our deputy City Manager, Justin Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and City Council. My name is Justin Murphy, so I'm here to present on the Menlo Park Community Campus Project. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So tonight's agenda item has two topics. One is related to the funding sources and strategy for the city requested work, and then the second item is related to the interim services plan. Just a quick recap, number of milestones over the past 11 months. I think in total, there's been about 15 public meetings and a comparable number of subcommittee meetings, pretty much for every public meeting. We've had a pre-meeting with the subcommittee comprised of Mayor Taylor and Councilmember Carlton. So most recently, the City Council met on October 13th regarding this project. And at that meeting, the council identified 10 additional items to be included in the project, as shown on this site plan and then itemized on the left. So there's 10 distinct items. And then they are listed here, so this list should look familiar to you from the last meeting. And in total, this equates to $9.714 million of additional unfunded work. And at the last meeting, we identified a number of potential funding sources. So this was the list from the last time, and all of these items are continuing to be considered but for the third bullet of repurposing existing capital improvement project funding. The other items continue to be in consideration. So one of the key items in consideration is Measure T. It's general obligation bonds for parks and recreation facilities. It was voted on in 2001 by Menlo Park voters. There's been two rounds of projects, the first 12 projects on this list, total approximately $13 million. Then there's three projects with the Ariaga family name associated with them, so those total approximately $11 million and reflect the city's contribution towards those philanthropic projects. As you can notice through this list, none of the projects are located north of 101 in the city of Menlo Park. During the timeframe, it equates to this, the city had a redevelopment agency, and redevelopment agency funding paid for approximately $7 million worth of parks and recreation projects north of 101 during this timeframe. So now, moving on to the topic for discussion tonight, the first one related to the potential funding strategy for the project. So just to recap, the power purchase agreement, we talked about this at the last meeting, where that, the improvements related to solar, the microgrid, and EV chargers could effectively be, can pay for themselves through a power purchase agreement. So that is not reflected in the required funding, because there would be no capital outlay by the city. So that's, we do need to remind people that that's a separate action that would be associated with this project. So the remaining need is $9.8 million. And so what staff and the subcommittee talked through was a way of working through that $9.8 million. So identified three tiers. So tier one being grants, donations, and community amenities, and then establishing a dollar amount as a target for how to approach that funding for the project. The second tier would be using general fund, assigned fund balance with a target amount of $2 million. And then the third tier being using Measure T, general obligation bonds, so the remaining amount would be $6.8 million. So the maximum of Measure T funding that's available is $14 million. So so I will... There's just, on tonight's agenda, there's a separate agenda item, item J2, that would actually be the mechanism for pursuing a potential budget amendment for this project. So just to go back up one slide, the additional funding of $9.8 million needs to be identified before, at the same time as project approval, and that's targeted for January. And that is critical to Facebook's offer for this project, is that the city has identified all the necessary funding. So that action could happen tonight through that separate agenda item, or by January, but it has to happen by January. So the exact use of the funds, the city has flexibility until there's a need to actually issue, say, the Measure T bonds, which wouldn't happen until next summer, but we need to identify a budget amendment between now and January. So in terms of other upcoming steps between now and January, there would be a planning commission, public hearing, it's either going to occur on December 7th or December 14th. There is a new item that we realized today that we will need to get in front of the City Council on December 8th, and that City Council authorization to terminate the existing power purchase agreement. As you may know, there's solar panels located on the existing Anette Harris Community Center. The city entered into a power purchase agreement, so those panels need to be removed prior to demolition of the building, which is scheduled for next summer. And we need to give the party enough notice to remove those solar panels. We believe it's a 180-day lead time, so to be able to accomplish that, we need to do that by the end of December. And we would need council authorization. There's, we're estimating that at $350,000, there's already money in the budget, but we need the City Council's authorization for the City Manager to make that payment. So then finally, I've talked about the January 12th date, so that's where a number of things would be culminating in terms of the sequoia determination, the actual project plan approvals, the construction agreement with Facebook, and then the final commitment of any remaining funding for the city requested work. So if we're able to accomplish that in January, then this would be the construction schedule. Right now, the facilities in question are currently closed. There's a chance that some of them may reopen next spring. If any of them do, then we would need to proceed with the closing the facilities again in June to be able to pursue remediation, demolition in the summer with a target of reopening the new facilities in the spring of 2023. So during the time of the, of the closure, the city needs to provide interim services. And you may recall, back in February, the council spent time identifying the approach to interim services. And then in April, there was a summary of what the plan was. In July, we reiterated that, and now we're coming to the council for final approval. So in terms of senior services, the plan calls for offering those services in the Ariaga Family Recreation Center, pretty much between the hours of eight and three, the primary activities in the center would be focused on. On the senior services, the facility currently has a kitchen that may need to be retrofitted slightly to accommodate the use, but we believe it's the best option available. As such, we did do pretty extensive surveying of the existing senior center participants. Were able to get in contact with 111 people, and the majority expressed positive feedback to participating in senior services located here. There's a need for transportation services, and we'll be focused on being able to provide that to the best of our abilities within the budget. So the second topic is recreation classes. There are, if not identified, any locations in the Bell Haven neighborhood that could accommodate the space needs for the recreation classes. So the focus is on enhancing transportation options to the Burgess campus. If any other opportunities present themselves for recreation classes over the, over the next six, 12 months, we can continue to explore those options, but the primary focus is going to be on enhancing transportation. And then finally, the after-school childcare, which is located in the Bell Haven Youth Center. That proposed location is Portables at Kelly Park, the far end of Kelly Park, near the basketball court. So that summarizes the interim services. They're all outlined in the staff report, the total budget for interim services. It's identified by the council back in February is $1 million, and we believe we're on track to deliver the services within that budget. There are a lot of unknowns with the new wrinkle of COVID-19, but we feel that this is all projecting for next, next summer. Hopefully, we're past some of this. So in terms of the recommendation, there's again two components. One is related to the funding sources and strategy, totaling the $9.8 million in those three tiers. I'm happy to go back to that slide that identifies the three tiers. It's all outlined in the staff report in terms of the approach for the council can, in terms of options, the council can identify, you know, additional tiers, collapsed tiers, they can adjust the dollar amounts. So there's, we try to establish a framework for the council to work within. Again, there's a separate agenda item that could enable the actual budget amendment. And so that's item J2. So what we're looking for tonight is council approval on a strategy that we can work towards, and then that action can either happen tonight or January 12th. Second item is related to interim services. So this is a critical action for tonight, to be able to stay on track for the overall project schedule. One item that requires extensive lead time is the Portables, and as part of that, staff is requesting authority to increase the city manager's contracting limit from the current amount of $78,000 to $250,000 for the Portables, and then a separate increase of $125,000 for the associated site work. So throughout the interim services off, work that's required, there's going to be a number of contracts. These are the two that we've identified, specific dollar amounts that are in excess of the $78,000 limit. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer questions. Any clarifying questions now, or more detailed questions after the, after public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, for the presentation. And Councilmember Carlton, I saw you had your hand up earlier, so not sure if the question you had was already answered. And you're on mute.
I'll talk about it after a public comment. Thanks.
Are there any clarifying questions? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I had a question about, in the report, there's discussion, a small paragraph about land acquisition costs. Can you just elaborate on that? And if it's more appropriate later in the discussion, that's perfectly fine, rather than now.
Yes, I could elaborate on it. It may be, I'd say it's a clarifying question. I'm happy to do that. I may go back to my presentation, because that may help if I go to one slide. Okay, so, so to just make sure that people are oriented to the site, Kelly Park and Fields to the left, Terminal Avenue to the right. So this is showing the proposed layout, but, and then there's PG&E electrical substation, large property to the left here. The, that parcel extends to here, and the city currently has, has historically been using portions of PG&E land through various permits over the years. It may not be obvious to people, but that's, that exists on, I'll say, the south side of Terminal Avenue. And then there's another parcel owned by PG&E on the north side of Terminal that runs towards the railroad tracks. So the parking lot is kind of, a portion of it is on PG&E-owned land. So we've been spending quite a bit of time working through various issues related to PG&E, because that was something that Facebook made clear, is that they wanted to make sure that there weren't going to be any obstacles that would prevent the construction of this. So we've been doing quite a bit of due diligence, and as part of that, identify that it may be in the city's best interest long-term to pursue acquisition of this land. So we've started some discussions of that. We understand from PG&E that that would be a multi-year process based off the fact that they're regulated by the California Public Utility Commission, and that they are recently out of bankruptcy. So we've identified that as a topic, and we're trying to work through other, other avenues to secure the city's rights to pursue the development of this project that could be within the project timeline. So that's kind of a quick overview of that question.
Thank you. So there's, at this point, it sounds like it would be way too early to anticipate any sort of financial impact.
I, yes.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other clarifying questions for Mr. Murphy before we go to public comment? Okay. Ms. Heron, can you take public comment at this time?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So for any member of the public wishing to speak on item J1 regarding Facebook's offer to rebuild community facilities at Terminal Avenue and the plan for interim services during construction, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council at this time. So our first public commenter will be Julie Shanson. Julie, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the City Council at this time.
Hi, thank you very much, and thank you, council members and Mr. Murphy. I'm heartened to see that the coffers will open for the north side of 101. I really appreciate the fact that we've spent so much of our Measure T bond funds that taxpayers on both sides of the freeway have paid into, but taxpayers, especially on the north side, have not gotten to benefit from, especially over the last few years, when travel through the city has been so difficult basically because of traffic. So I want to strongly encourage you to pursue this balanced funding source. So I want to strongly encourage you to pursue this balanced funding source and use the bond funds to benefit to benefit all of the residents of Menlo Park and especially those in District One. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is Elise Stein. Elise, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Hello, everyone. We submitted our our comment in writing. Judy, do you have it?
Yes, it was attached to the agenda for the public and city councils view.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that we had it. I'm happy to read it unless you would like to read it. Okay.
If you would like to, you may.
Okay, I'll go ahead with this. So it's nice to hear and see you all. And we're very pleased to be representing the Menlo Park Library Foundation. The foundation is a small group of volunteers who drives the fundraising efforts for capital campaigns. And the last few months, we run a youth pot, sorry, youth poster exhibition, a books by mail service in partnership with the Friends of the MP Library, Kepler's Books, and the Seed Lending Library. We're now preparing for a major fundraising effort to support the library needs in the Menlo Park Community Campus. We began our preparations early in 2019 before the Facebook offer was made. We want to bring to the community an effective, productive, professional campaign that allows, that aligns with the community. In May, we had external consultants complete a capital campaign feasibility study. The research was done through individual interviews, community and community members, and conversations with representatives of the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. We suspended this study because of COVID, but we had enough information compiled in order for the consultants to provide a substantive report. The feasibility study determined we could raise between $2 and $3 million in a capital campaign. The campaign includes three phases. A leader, the first is a leadership and major gifts. Second is an institutional and support phase, support phase, and the third is a community campaign. We believe engaging the community is a critical part of the campaign in order to build community pride and ownership. The foundation is ready to move forward in concert with the city council's timeline. The ideal time to kick off the campaign is when there are approved drawings to take to potential donors. And we anticipate that to be sometime in January of 2021, as you will be determining. So I'd like to say in closing, we are really looking forward to the future with excitement. And this presentation is from me as acting president of the Menlo Park Library Foundation from Monica Korman, who was the past president of the foundation, and Lynn Fa Vinci, who is the treasurer of the Menlo Park Library Foundation. And with that, I close.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for item J1 for public comment. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for both the public comments that we received. And we'll bring this discussion back to the council. So are there any follow up questions for staff or some concerns? Or do you want to just go directly to the two items that we are deciding, which is funding sources and then also interim services? Councilmember McCarleton?
So I mentioned the the power aspect with the solar and all that at our last the executive board meeting with Pennsyl Clean Energy. And Jen Pepper, who's executive director, was excited and interested and happy to work with us. Obviously, it's a little early at this point, but she expressed interest in discussing further how we might work together on that. I also spoke with the Fire Chief Shavelhoman. Since this does have an aspect of emergency in terms of how the building is being designed. And he was happy to hear that that was the direction we were going and also had some ideas on some potential grants and funding that we might be able to use as well. So putting that forward for staff to follow up and work with him on that because he seemed to have some good ideas on that as well. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I was wondering if Mr. Murphy could put back up on the screen the list of Measure T projects. And this is before we, this is more of a clarifying question before we delve into the substance of of this of this agenda item. So I just want to be clear as I see it and certainly correct me if I'm wrong. None of these projects are actually in District Two. Is that correct as you understand it, Mr. Murphy?
Let's see, so just go through the list. Yes, so in terms of District Two, I did mention the use of redevelopment funds. And so I believe that Willow Oaks Park was located in the redevelopment agency. So that was not part of the $7 million total that I talked about previously. But I'm pretty sure there are park improvements through redevelopment. But it's, it is, it was not, I could, I could say the, to answer your question, it looks like Measure T money was not used in any District Two facilities.
Okay, so and then, and then you said that District Two was subject to some other redevelopment
Yes.
agency funds. Do we know, but not 7 million, right? And so do we know what that that total was?
We could get that. I don't have that off the top of my head, though.
Okay, so but the 7 million went to what we understand is the neighborhoods of, or the neighborhood of District One, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and then in this, the 25 million here went to districts, not District Two, south of Highway 101, correct? And you're going to get to me this, this figure. Do we have some sense of what that figure might be? Are we talking $50,000? Are we talking $100,000, $500,000?
I could say that the, from memory, that the park facility in District Two, the city-owned park, park and recreation facility, I believe is limited to Willow Oaks. And so I think if you, but if there's another park or recreation facility, feel free to remind me. And then my recollection from redevelopment spending, it was a combination of both the park and the adjacent school. And so I think it was the, it could be in the order of magnitude of a million dollars, say, given the field work associated with that. But I'd have to look up what the actual amount was.
Okay, if at some point, obviously, appreciate that you don't have it tonight. If that information could be provided, that that would be, that would be great. I just want to be like, again, as some members of the community want to bring up issues of like where money flows and who gets what, I just want to be clear that like we can have that discussion. But it's not always, once you start that discussion, there's a lot, lots of ways it can go, right? And because I want to be clear that like I'm seeing lots of funds here, none of which went to District Two. And none of which in this, this current project will go to District Two. And I think that that is important as a representative of District Two to make that point.
Since I can't see others, but I know that my screen is being shared. Should I, Mayor, should I continue with this list or should I stop sharing my screen?
Does anyone have any other questions on this list on completed projects? With Measure T funds? No, I guess the, I'm not even sure which one to ask you to put up, maybe the slide just on the, what we're deciding here. What funding source and then also the interim services. And thank you, Vice Mayor Combs, for your comment.
So I will first go to just the the two action items, one related to the funding sources and strategy. And then the second is the interim services. I'm happy to go to the more specific slides on either one of these, depending on which way the council would like to go. And it may be appropriate, these could be pursued in in one motion, two motions. So whatever works best for you, Mayor.
Let's start with the interim services.
Great. And again, I can't, this is where I can't see people. So would you like me to do a quick recap of the interim services or?
Well, do you have a separate slide? So if we look at the two items independently. And so with the interim services, what we, what we would be determining is one is increasing the city manager's contracting authority. And then the second is increasing the sign and authority for associated site work. And I just have a follow up question on the the portables. Is this the cost of one portable or multiple portables? And do they include bathrooms? Or do you have to rent bathrooms independently?
Let's see, good, good questions. So the $250,000 estimate here is for a grouping of portables that typically come in 12 foot wide modules. And these would be grouped together into something that I believe is I'd have to jump to one other thing. I think it's 48 by 60 or so. So that would create a space that's equivalent in size to the current Menlo Park Children's Center located on Laurel. You may recall that there's two components to that site. One is the former police station. The other is modulars closer to the street. So it's, it would be the same size as that facility. So that's about, I think it's four, for those modulars put together. In addition, one of the extreme challenges that we faced is related to some utilities. So and we looked into options of trying to produce a sewer connection to have piping to a sewer line that was prohibitively expensive. So the next best option was to rent a portable that's devoted to the restrooms. And that would be adjacent to that complex that I just described. So the $250,000 estimate here is for both it'd be the rentals for a two year period. It's the install, the delivery install and for two year period.
Thank you.
And then associated with that is the $125,000, that's site work. So as you may know, that the majority of the students that use the after school program, I think it's two thirds of the students are Beechwood School students. And so majority of this work is to ensure that students can walk from the current Beechwood School to this location. And so that's, that's the majority of this work. Because it would be through the, through the construction zone.
And we could, I can ask this question off.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So I could actually, I'll ask it the question anyways, but with the parking lot, just with the safety from walking from Beechwood, just knowing how the circulation is in the parking lot. So is there, are you planning on closing the parking lot in the back so that it's safer for the kids to walk back there?
So I, I did not include the I think it's attachment E that was in the in the staff report in my slides, but I'll pull it up quickly. You don't mind. So because it will be easier to explain with the map. Sorry. Okay. So so you're able to see, so Beechwood School to the right, the proposed portables would be at the far end of the parking lot. So effective, but in this kind of differentiates between the, the yellow is the, the main portion of the portable. Then adjacent to it is the restroom. All in all, this would take up about 22 parking spaces between where the exact, the footprints of these two facilities are. In terms of the path that people would take, I'll go back to Beechwood School on the right and work my way to the left. We'd be setting up a pedestrian facility along the railroad tracks. So kind of just separate from where the main construction activity would be. Then a crosswalk here and then bring students onto the existing kind of track area to be able to walk down to the, to the trailer. So the parking lot next to Kelly Park would remain open. The parking lot next to Beechwood School is going to remain open for the majority of the time. The parking lot immediately adjacent to the existing and at a Harris Community Center. It's going to try to maintain that as much as possible. But there will be times during construction that traffic will need to be rerouted. We may eventually potentially be flipping the parking that's available to Beechwood School. But throughout construction, we need to maintain parking for Beechwood School and parking for Kelly Park. That's kind of a quick summary.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this item for interim services? And Councilmember McCarleton, we didn't talk about this, but does it make sense to separate the two topics, interim services and funding and vote separately as opposed to trying to do one motion?
I mean, you and I have talked about this so much on the subcommittee. It's what I think it's what our colleagues are most comfortable with at this point. I'm happy to do it together.
So does anyone else have any thoughts on that? I, I think that the funding piece is going to be a little more complicated than the interim services. Councilmember Nash?
I completely agree with you. I would feel comfortable, depending on any more discussion about the interim services proceeding with that. But I do have some topics I'd like to discuss within the funding sources.
Councilmember McCarleton?
Okay, I move approval of interim services.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember McCarleton and a second by City Councilmember Nash to approve the interim services as prepared by staff. Is there any further city council discussion or questions? Seeing none, by roll call vote, Councilmember McCarleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Muir?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Councilmember Nash, did you want to start off the discussion? You said you had a few. You said you had a few concerns around the funding.
I do have some questions around the funding. Thank you. And first of all, I want to acknowledge just that incredible generous proposal for the Capitol campaign by the Menlo Park Library Foundation. That's sensational and should be really beneficial. But thank you. A question I have about that is how that fits into this, the 9.8 million? And whether or not, because in the report, it said it would be for furniture and some other items. And I'm wondering if that's something that's already, how does this all work out for that piece of it?
Mayor, would you like me to take the first stab?
Yes, please.
Okay. Yes. So yes, very, very generous offer from the Menlo Park Library Foundation. So I, I think the way to kind of, oops, sorry, approach that. I just need to, sorry. Move one other thing on my screen so I can see my own screen is, so that would fall within tier, tier one. And right now, the, the amount that was listed there was $1 million. I think in the staff report, we identified that there was a $200,000 grant that we became aware of related to pools that we, we would look to pursue that, to be able to pursue that $200,000 grant. We need to come back to the city council for a resolution to identify these are the funds. We think that could happen as part of the January timeframe. Now that we're going to be coming back to you in December about the power purchase agreement, we may just try to provide a little bit more information about that so that you can tee that up for your January actions. So then that would leave another $800,000 within this category. As we wrote in the staff report, did not believe that based off the current project timeline, that community amenities would be appropriate for this particular project. So if the amount that the donations may be higher than, than $800,000, the council could, within this framework, adjust the amount that you want to set as your, your target. If by increasing that amount, then you could potentially reduce the amounts on the, in tier two or tier three. So in terms of how it would work, because the, the library foundation wants to focus, I believe, they would want to focus their contributions towards the library aspects of the project. The council may recall that there's already $6 million of funding toward, towards this project, so city funds towards this project. And a portion of those are general fund CIP. So that would be an opportunity to repurpose some of the, the funding that has, some of the monies that have already been funded, reallocate those and have that work. So as long as we know what the, the target is that the city council is comfortable with. We're trying to structure this in a way that is we actually get the specifics over the, the coming months that we can make the appropriate adjustments and use money in the best way possible. So in this case, it may be a matter of repurposing some of the contributions already in the project to make sure that we've aligned what the fundraising targets would be with the actual components of the, of the project. It would the, and maybe just for benefit of the larger group, just in terms of the most obvious, the largest amount of this $9.8 million is attributed to the pool. So my guess is the library foundation is not necessarily interested in raising the money for the pool. But on the flip side, their ability to fundraise could potentially be tapped to broaden what could potentially happen in the way of donations.
So how is, are we looking at the cost of furniture at this point? Has there been money set aside? We may have talked about it before and I.
Yes, there, in terms of furniture, I'd have to go to, to one other staff report for that. But yeah, there was a, is the October 13th staff report where we identified a line item for that. So I guess that up shortly.
Excuse me, actually, I'll take, I personally don't need to see it. I guess I'm just wondering, do we need to set aside stuff? How do we think of that money for the furniture? The fixtures and equipment essentials as opposed to what we're looking at here? That's.
I think we would, we would just reallocate the, the, which is for, for round numbers. Let's just say it was a million dollars. We could take the million dollars that's already been funded of those, that $6 million that I was talking about. Take that million dollars of already funded and put it towards the pool. It's kind of the simplest way of talking about it.
So in the $6 million is the furniture and fixtures that we've just been talking about?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, perfect. So my general thought on this is that we should be using measure T funds rather than, so tier one sounds great. And I would look at the staff to basically finesse that. On tier two, I question why we would use general funds rather than just going to the measure T bonds? And the reason why is it seems like we have such a uncertain economic situation with the pandemic. And it, the measure, the general funds unassigned are available for whatever we might need in the future. And the measure T funds are specifically for this purpose and what we're building here. So it seems, I would propose that we would not dip into the general fund and instead add that amount of money in the measure T bonds.
Let's see, Mayor, Mayor, do you want me to take a first?
Yes.
Okay, great. So again, since I can't see anybody, I can't, I need to gauge. So it's completely a fair point and it's something for the city council to, to weigh tonight. I can share, but I don't want to necessarily speak for the subcommittees. That's why I'm hesitating a little bit, but I think it's just a matter of how you may want to tap the, the various funding sources. So I can say that, just to, again, for the benefit of the larger group, that the measure T funds are, are, it's a, it's a bond, the, the property, property owners within the city would need to pay, pay that back over the next 30 years or so. So I think, I think there's a bit of a spirit of trying to minimize the amount of impact associated with on the, what would need to be repaid. But that, that ultimately, this is exactly a council decision on how you want to put this together. So you can, the council can decide at this point in time to not use tier two at all and just have the equivalent tier one and tier three. You can retain tier two and adjust the amount. You can switch the order of the tiers. But based off the conversation with the subcommittee and then way staff put this together based off this overall hierarchy, that's, that's where, where we, where we landed.
So if I may continue, thank you. And I completely understand that. So I guess my question is more for the council. By the council, fellow council members. But before we go into that, I do have a question because that's originally what I was thinking. But then the, in the report, it's actually proposed that we, if I understood correctly, that we issue the entire $14 million of the bond. In which case, then we're actually exceeding what we need and what we would, the homeowners would be paying, which sort of negates that whole argument, if I understand correctly. And so that's one piece of it. And then the second piece is if based on the report, we're actually talking about issuing $14 million of funds, which would mean that in December 2022, property owners would begin paying approximately $45 per $1 million assessed value. If we in fact don't take the full 14 million, I would assume that that amount that the property owners would be paying would also be reduced, which would be beneficial, given the economy and how everybody is coping with it. So how much, I guess the question is, is that true? If we did not use the full $14 million, that we would not be assessing property owners $45 per million? And if so, how much would that reduce if in fact we were to only go out for, let's say, nine million for the measure T rather than 14? And what are the ups and downs of doing that?
Let's see, so Mayor, would you like me to respond?
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah. So this is where I can respond at a high level. And then depending on how much you would like to get into the details, I may need assistance from our, our financial team. So, but I'll take the, the first stab. So in terms of the, and maybe just for simplicity, if we could use the round numbers of seven, $7 million for tier three, so to round up that 6.8 to $7 million versus the full 14 million that's available. So the council does have the option of tapping $7 million or, or the full 14 million. I think the, the approach from staff perspective would be taking a look at other parks and rec potential projects that were identified in the Parks and Rec master plan. As you may recall, there's Parks and Rec master plan identified tier one projects. The, what is now the, being referred to as the Menlo Park Community Campus Project that we're talking about tonight was the, the number one priority within that, that tier. And and, but there's 13 other projects that were identified as of being of interest to the community for parks and recreation improvements throughout the city. Though those projects in and of themselves exceed the, the $14 million that'd be available under measure T. But it would be a worthwhile exercise to identify if there is any interest in tapping measure T bond money over the next couple of years to identify that now or within the coming months to issue one set of bonds as opposed to one set now and then another set a few years from now. If there's no desire to tap the additional $7 million, that's completely fair and fine. But if there's any desire to tap it, it would be much more efficient to group it together than to do two separate issuances. I believe once the money is issued, then it needs to be fully spent within five years. And there's a certain progression of how much money needs to be spent over each of those years. You need to be showing that you're making progress on, on delivering the projects. So that's, that's kind of the philosophy between if there's a desire to use bond proceeds, it may be worthwhile to you to identify other projects that could tap that full 14 million. So then the second part was about the, the amount that property owners would need to pay. Again, that's where I kind of relied on the simplicity of the 7 million and the $14 million that need to rely on others. But generally, yes, if you're going to issue half of the so seven out of the $14 million, then the estimates that we had in the staff report would probably be approximately half, half of that. So instead of the $45, it'd be a little over $20. So that's in addition to the existing, I think it's $65 per. And again, this is, these dollar amounts are per million dollars of assessed value. So it's not the market value of the property, it's the assessed value. And we've got properties that range the spectrum of $100,000 of assessed value to hundreds of millions of dollars of assessed value. So that, that ratio that we're talking about is 45 million, $40, $45 per $1 million of assessed value. That's kind of a quick response to your questions. And if you'd like to go into more detail, that's where I would probably ask others to assist me with that.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I wanted to take a question from Councilmember Mueller.
Thank you. My question, Mr. Murphy, is, and I just don't know the answer to it. Can you repay a general obligation bond back early?
I would probably want to check with someone else on that specific question.
Well, I will just share the logic behind it. I don't know if there's someone who can answer it, but if we can repay the general obligation bond back early, then it would make sense to me that we would take the money from the general obligation bonds now as opposed to from the general fund while we're in the pandemic. And then we would repay that back when the economy recovered. And make a note of that within our budget process. But I would like, before I would, I would propose that as a strategy. I'd want to know if we can, number one, pay it back early. And number two, what the penalty would be?
Thank you. Mr. Jacobson?
Yes, good evening. Dan Jacobson, Assistant Administrative Services Director, Councilmember Mueller. You, there are options to repay bonds in some cases. Typically, bonds are not callable for a certain period of time, 10 years is fairly standard for general obligation bonds. And it is important to note that if they were repaid, they would be, they would need to be repaid from another source. So they cannot be assessed on the same tax levy that they otherwise would be. So they, they would need to come from another source such as the general fund.
Right. And so if we say we added the extra $2 million to the measure T obligation fund and then the economy recovered two years from now, and we had ERAF coming in again. Could we take ERAF before we dedicated that to the general, to the general, to a general fund or some other fund and take that to pay back the general obligation bond for the 10 year call?
They cannot be paid back before a 10 year, they cannot be repaid before they're callable.
Okay, so we'd have to wait for the 10 years. But then my question is, so then what would the, hi, Mr. Kitty. My question, my question is what would the, what would the penalty be, been to pay it back then at the 10 year mark? How much would we have, how much basically like if it was a credit card, what did we pay on interest for, to run the 10 years? He just wants to say hi.
He's, he's very interested in participating. I, I'm not certain that there would be a penalty. It would be the outstanding principle at the very least, but I don't know that there is a prepayment penalty. It's the idea behind a callable bond is to allow the issuer to repay it at some point if it becomes favorable to do that.
Then I would agree with Councilmember Nash. I would, I would say just take it from the measure T general obligation bonds. So, and then we could, and then at the 10 year mark, you could try to pay it down.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Just so I'm understanding, so under that approach, we would be asking or issuing bonds for the full 14 million max? Correct or, or not?
I'd be up for the nine million. So I'd be up to 8.8, I think is what's looking there, not counting grants, donations and amenities. So I'd be up for the nine. So I'd be up for the nine.
Vice Mayor Combs, I think that's a, a part of the decision that we have to make. Is, is it the full fourteen or, or a different amount? So, and initially, and I think that you read this in the staff report, is that Councilmember Carlton and I didn't agree on the approach to funding, which is why the tiering came in. Initially, before this conversation started amongst the five of us, I was initially gonna say all Measure T. But with some of the comments that you made, Vice Mayor Combs, if we were thinking of going after the full fourteen million, I would only agree to it if some of the funding was designated to the park in District Two, because I looked at the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and there's actually only one park on there in that area of Menlo Park. And so it doesn't make sense not to invest in the only park. And so if we were gonna go after the full fourteen, or if it was ten, whatever, there's, there's money available to invest in the Parks and Rec Master Plan that's specific to the park, the only park in District Two. Oops, my stuff is falling. Councilmember Carlton, but Mr. Pigueros, did you want to say something before Councilmember Carlton?
If I may, Madam Mayor, thank you. So the item before us this evening, or before the council this evening, is limited to the MPCC project. If the council gives direction similar to what Councilmember Mueller outlined to, and Councilmember Nash outlined, to issue or to budget nine million of Measure T funds for this project, that's the decision that we would need this evening. If the city council wants to tap additional Measure T, we have time to do that. We have time for that analysis and consideration. The, the decision on how much Measure T to issue, really, we would target, hopefully winding that up in May or June of twenty twenty-one, so that then we can start the, the bond issuance process in July and have the money and the funds available for construction of this particular project. So the full fourteen is not, is not necessary this evening. Strictly the nine or ten million dollars. That's, or the nine point eight million that's on the slide in front of you.
Thank you, Mr. Pigueros. Councilmember Carlton?
Sure, I, I would not support doing it for the whole nine point eight million, because we know for a fact there are some grants out there that we have a good chance of getting. And we assume there'll be a few more. So it would be less than that. I, and this is a question maybe for Nick. I was under the impression that what we were voting on tonight was the tiers, was the level, was what we were gonna consider, not the absolute exact number. So we would say, yes, we're giving direction to apply for all the grants and donations and community amenities that are out there. And then we would come back with the, the final number on, on the bond obligation that we put forward once we're more aware of the other funds available. But this was more of a guidance on Tier One being that we first get all the grant money possible before we put out the Measure T, because Measure T raises people's tax. And we wanted to keep that at the lowest rate possible, if we, in particular, if we can get grants and donations and, and other, other funding available. So, and if I didn't understand that correctly, please let me know, Mr. Pigueros. But this was more a direction on where we're finding the money, not, not the final exact dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember Carlton. What, again, as, as Mr. Murphy outlined earlier in the report, what we are hoping to do is get council direction on the bucket, effectively the buckets of money that we can use or we can appropriate or budget for this particular project, which has a cost of, a remaining cost of nine point eight million. Depending on the direction that we receive from council tonight and the generous offer by the Menlo Park Library Foundation. I think the intent, what we'd like from the council this evening is pursue grants and donations. So our staff will reach out to the foundation and begin to work through the details of what might be a realistic, or what, if it's three million or whatever the number is. And then come back when we're ready to issue the Measure T bonds for this particular project and say we were able to secure X number of dollars in grants, X number dollar of donations, and this is how much Measure T we need. And so this is sort of like a not-to-exceed example of what, of direction to staff. Our goal is, or in our direction tonight would be if the council agrees with the nine, with the two million in general fund plus the six point eight million in Measure T, to use that sum, the eight point eight million or round up to nine million, that money will be in the Measure T bucket. So we would not transfer the use of unassigned, we would not do the unassigned fund balance.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton.
So for things that are, the, the unassigned fund balance is basically funds that we didn't expect, things that cost less, things that brought in more money than we thought, which is why it was, why staff put forward for us to consider this. Out of that would be, for example, the, the portables for the students, is that the kind of thing? Or is it all just goes into the same pot of money and comes out where it needs to come out? I'm just saying, is, is there a matter of timing, or is it, is it all just going in the same pot?
So this particular nine point eight million does not have to do with interim services. Interim services are already funded by the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pigueros. Councilmember Nash?
So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, if that's appropriate at this point. Before I do that, I do want to express support for District Two in the future being, getting a high priority look at Measure T funds. I think that that would be beneficial for the city to make everything as equitable as possible. So I would propose a motion that we look at Tier One and Tier Three funds and that we do not go into the general fund assigned balance. If there needs to be a more specific motion, I would request help with that or putting up the other, the other slide that had what we were to decide tonight. So I would, I would propose a motion to have the funding sources for the city requested were comprised of Tier One and Tier Three totaling the nine point eight million dollars.
I see Assistant City Manager Nick Geras is here. Just questioning if staff needs any clarification on the city manager contract authority?
I believe, so Judy, on, on that one, I think, I think that was covered through the first motion.
Oh, perfect, thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
But thanks for the clarification, because it's always good to clarify.
I'll make sure that the first motion will also clarify that. So I do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Nash and a second by Mayor Taylor for the funding sources to be reviewed as to Tier One and Tier Three and not Tier Two. Councilmember Nash, should I capture that correctly?
That's perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further city council discussion or questions? Seeing none by roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton?
Hi.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And at this time, we will have our lunch break. It is seven thirty-two. We will return at eight o'clock, if not sooner. Enjoy your dinner.
Thank you. As a reminder, please disengage webcams and microphones and only engage your webcams when returning. Thank you.
All city council members return to our virtual basis.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on under regular business is item J two amend the city councils adopted 2020 2021 budget and salary schedule. To introduce this item is our assistant city manager, Nick Pigeros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one second while I get my presentation here. And can you see the presentation now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Nick Pigeros Assistant City Manager this evening. Dan Jacobson, our Assistant Administrative Services Director, will be joining me in the presentation of a fiscal year 2020 21 budget amendment and salary schedule amendment. I'm going to hand it off to Dan to get us started.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Good to see you again for some further budget amendments. So as expected during budget development, this fiscal year does require more budget maintenance than most. City Council has taken several actions to amend the budget so far. This is the largest set of amendments for consideration, and it does address a number of areas. And I will make the note right now, since we can see some some red numbers there that Mr. Pigeros was kind enough to amend the presentation during the break. So it does reflect the action that City Council just took in the last item. And so if we missed something there, do apologize, but that was a last minute adjustment, just to try to make sure that to try and make sure that the numbers match the action that the City Council just took. And so the requested action before you tonight is two items. The first is to consider amending the fiscal year 2020 21 budget. That includes 15.37 million dollars in revenues across all funds, 14.40 million in expenditures across all funds. That does include transfers, so I will make the note that the same dollar may appear in both the revenue and an expenditure column, just based on the transfers that are included. That is to meet governmental accounting standards. Also included in this action is nine and a quarter full time equivalent or FTE staff position requests. And these do address a number of city council concerns, so city council priorities, work plan items and other departmental requests which were identified by departments as opportunities to increase service to the community or other opportunities that may use scarce resources judiciously. The second item is to consider amending the salary schedule. This is includes two position title changes with no salary changes and the incorporation of several flexibly staff positions. But this action does not change the number of authorized full time equivalent employees. So just quickly, by way of agenda, we'll cover the city council priorities first and then the identified work plan amendment so that the city council adopted work plan. Then we'll move into the department requested amendments. So these are not on the city council work plan, but again are the items that were identified as potential good uses of city resources. We'll cover a handful of nondepartmental amendments, so these don't fall into either of the previous buckets, but are necessary amendments are necessary for consideration due to new information since budget adoption. Cover those salary schedule amendments in a little more detail. And then, as is typical, we'll take any clarifying questions from City Council, move to public comment and then allow City Council their deliberations and giving staff direction. And with that, I will pass it back to Mr. Pigeros.
Thank you, Dan. So as the, as Dan mentioned, we have several attachments that are attached to the staff report. It was our attempt to identify the resources necessary to carry out various projects. The city council has either adopted as a priority project, which is what you see on the screen before you this evening. Uh, the identified work plan, which incorporate, which we'll talk about next. And and so I'll just kick it off here with the priority projects. So this table largely reflects the content that was in attachment B. Attachment B to the staff report also has a narrative description of each of these items. Of the top five city council adopted priority projects. We have, we are requesting resources for five, for for four of the five. The first and perhaps the most pressing this evening is the 2020 housing element. We have had extensive conversations on the long range planning required and mandated by the state. This is typically a joint effort between staff and consultants. And the community development department is requesting an expenditure budget of one point, can't see that 1.69 million with two full time equivalent personnel, community service, community development director, and a senior planner. Uh, just to go back in time a bit when we were balancing the current year budget. We knew that we would, we didn't have all the information at the time in order to adopt a, a an aggressive budget that would fund all of our, all of the council priorities or work plan items. And we anticipated that we would be back at this around this time to request with new information and to fund those projects. Uh, one of the balancing budget budget measures that we took uh, at the very last or sort of the tail end of the budget process was to eliminate all vacant positions. And so at that time, community development itself had a number of vacant positions, including the community development director. The request is to restore that position. And and they seen, and a senior planner position, which was also frozen and eliminated from the budget. Uh, this, the second item here is what we just discussed in the earlier agenda item, 9.8 million dollar budget for the MPCC. Uh, reference number four, it comprised is comprised of three different efforts to help address needs that have been identified to have risen out of the COVID 19 pandemic local emergency. Uh, the first is a budget of 125,000 dollars to modify city buildings and facilities to accommodate restoration of certain services and the return of staff to the office. There are a number, as we see everywhere we go these days, there are a number of measures, best practices that are in place in order to protect both the public and our staff from unnecessary infection or spread of the of the COVID 19 virus. Uh, the other item that we're suggesting council consider is identifying a grant program or developing a grant program for to assist restaurants with providing outdoor dining. This would be very similar to the street cafe projects that were approved several years ago, and that staff report was attached to the memo to give more detail on how that's how that program was structured. Uh, given the time urgency of of the need to adapt to outdoor dining. The recommendation is to try to find a nonprofit partner who can administer the grants for us to move that in a bit more speedy way. And then finally, the water and solid waste rate assistance program for for residents in Menlo Park or Menlo Park Water customers or subscribe to to garbage services. I would like to add that the city did receive an unanticipated reimbursement from the state of California for COVID 19 pandemic related expenses. These projects here in this category are our options to use. That that could be used for that that money could be used to fund. And then finally, an upgrade to the city's website through the IT master plan. So some there is 11.96 million, the vast majority of it being the MPCC. See. No, did that work? There we are. Okay. Um, the next slide summarizes the variety of work identified work plan projects, some that have been on the city council priorities and work plan for a couple of years. However, several of them are new. Uh, the accessory dolly dwelling unit and community amenities list update. The El Camino downtown specific plan, housing incentives and downtown Santa Cruz Avenue closure and economic development initiatives, all of those were previously approved by city council. Uh, what the staff is ask requesting in these particular projects is is substantially staff to help manage those projects and and move them forward. That would be reference numbers nine, 10, 11, and 12. Uh, reference number 13, we're recommending contracting with a professional services firm to provide economic development support and that their proposal was attached to the staff report. As the council is aware, we adopted a climate action plan over the summer, and there is additional funds needed to to execute on that plan. Uh, this, these are all professional services. The mayor, number 16, the mayor had I had attended a national National League of Cities Conference and was exposed to their race equity leader and leadership program, their real program. This would replace the, this would give greater structure and replace the previous work plan item that had been identified, which is institutionalized bias reform. And then additionally, Public Works is requesting some staffing to support the Ravenswood grade separation study and traffic calming on Middle Avenue, which was added at recent council meeting. So in some $680,000 requested for this year and 3.25 full time equivalent personnel. And with that, I will now go back to Dan for department and nondepartmental requests.
Thank you, Nick. So moving on to items that are not on the city council's work plan, these, the items included in attachment D are the department requests where the departments identified potential uses of city resources or needs in a handful of cases as ways that were options to increase service to the community or just updates that had not been previously included in the budget. So just working through those items there, the very first one, update police equipment includes two items that is automated automatic license plate readers and incident reporting software. Um, so those do not include any personnel requests, but are just updates to current police resources. The next one down, the community service officer, this is also within the police department. This is one full time equivalent position. It restores a vacancy that was removed during the budget process, and it's a position that responds to lower level crimes, which frees up capacity for sworn officers. The third item on the list is to restore the police traffic unit. So this is another one of those items that was removed during the budget process. This restores dedicated functions. So whereas sworn officers, they they will do traffic enforcement while on patrol. This would dedicate them to doing traffic enforcement rather than as an additional duty while on patrol. And this request is for two full time equivalents. Next item on the list is the below market rate housing. There is additional administration required, given that there are a number of current and new inclusionary units. And they do require compliance, and so this is for contracted services to continue those. And this is from the BMR fund rather than the general fund as the rest are. The next item on the list, process improvement initiatives, this would develop, this would be a senior management analyst dedicated to addressing organization wide process improvement. So given the current state of change, this would allow the organization to capitalize on that and do regular process improvement initiatives to either lower costs or increase service without increasing costs. And that is one full time equivalent. And then the last item on the list is building permit process improvement. So the 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 land management software Acela has been implemented, but does would benefit from some additional process stabilization, and this is a temporary staffing request through the end of fiscal year 2020 21 to stabilize that process. Excuse me, in total, this is 0.54 million dollars across two funds, the journal fund and the below market rate housing fund and for full time equivalent positions. So moving on to nonnondepartmental amendments, so these are not related to any specific city department, this is an area in the budget which is typically broken out in order to allow year to year comparability and because they're not necessarily tied to any of those, the activities of those departments. Um, so the first one on the list is property taxes, and you'll notice there are now revenue and expenditure columns. So the budget assumption during the development process for 2020 21 was that there would be no growth in property taxes. Um, but the actual assessed valuation growth was 9.2%. And so this reflects a portion of that. And then the other element of this is that there was a resolution of review on excess educational revenue augmentation fund between the county and the state. And that review was completed, and there isn't the expectation of the second half distribution for excess ERAF. The next item on the list is sales taxes. And so again, the budget assumption was that there would be a substantial reduction that was approximately 25%. However, receipts since then have been better However, receipts since then have been better than expected, and the actual reduction has been lower. And this, as mentioned during one of the previous budget updates, is an area that still has substantial uncertainty. And so the number that's included here is a very conservative amendment. The third item on the list, the CARES Act reimbursement, this is what Nick mentioned earlier. This was a distribution from the state of federal funds related to addressing COVID nineteen and the impacts that it had. And so this is that amendment to to incorporate those revenues. Unanticipated, again, the budget assumption was that there would be no federal or state aid, and this is new information to update that. The next item on the list, moving into the expenditure column, is unanticipated personnel savings. So this is a negative expenditure in reflection that during the budget development process, there was no vacancy factor incorporated. Essentially, all of the vacant positions were eliminated, and the expectation was the turnover would be somewhat lower. As it has turned out, there have been some turnover in some positions, and so this realizes what those are. And then the other component of this is that there was a federal tax credit for the family's first coronavirus response act or FFCRA, for those who are familiar with it. It covered emergency paid leave and the city did incur some costs, and so this offsets some of those costs. So this item reduces expenditures and recognition of both of those. The next items, you'll see broken out into two lines, but they could realistically be collapsed into a single item now. The use of assigned fund balance was the intended use of the unassigned fund balance from the general fund that has been removed, as you can see there in red stricken out. That is no longer necessary due to the previous action council just took. So this really is just transfers in and transfers out. And so this is just the transfer from the general fund to the general capital fund to meet those requirements in the general capital fund. And it, yeah, so this is a governmental accounting piece, but that a required piece of it. So in total, these non departmental amendments are five point two six million in the revenue category and one point two one million in the expenditure category. And to summarize, so wanted to give just a quick summary, given that there was a lot of information over the previous slides. So these are essentially the same numbers that that were shown previously, just all consolidated into one. As you can see, the the total revenue number again across all funds is fifteen point three seven million. The total expenditure number is fourteen point four million, and the total full time equivalent staff number is nine and a quarter. And then just a slightly different view, this is the same amendments. It looks like we may have missed one number there. But this is just broken down by which fund they are all in. And so the largest impact is to the Memo Park Community Campus Fund, nine point eight million dollars in both revenues and expenditures, followed by the general fund. And then below market rate housing and general capital have somewhat less general capital offset on the revenue expenditure side due to the transfer in from the general fund. And so with that, I will hand it back to Nick, who will discuss the salary schedule amendments.
Thank you, Dan. Just very quickly, the city council maintains sole discretion over the salary schedule that documents the salaries for all city personnel, both minimum and a maximum. We're requesting two different types of changes to the salary schedule. The first are re- retitling to positions, water system supervisor to chief water operator and city arborist or public works supervisor dash city arborist to just city arborist. Neither of those changes affect the pay scale. The next four adjustments that you see are additions that you see there on the on the slide are the sort of the final step of transitioning to what we call career letters. So this is a situation where we identify talent either in the organization or external to the organization to perform a particular function, let's say, building inspector. When they come to us, they may be anywhere from a senior level. So this would be a person who has who is highly skilled in their profession and would be appointed at the senior level, but there's also the possibility that we get a that the ideal staff person that comes to us is beginning their career. And so what these flexible flexibly staff positions allow us to is to hire somebody and as their as their skill and expertise improves their workload and their work responsibilities grow greater in greater complexity. And we are able to over time to to recognize that that added value as opposed to the employee leaving and going to another organization for promotion. So this is both a recruitment and a retention strategy that effectively takes that effectively takes a single class. So right now we have building inspector and senior building inspector, but we do not have building inspector one and creates a career path for those individuals. So with that, I'll just summarize the requested action. We're again asking council to consider amending the budget and also consider amending the salary schedule. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bagaros and Mr. Jacobson for the presentation. Are there any follow up questions, clarifying questions from from the council before we go to public comment? Councilmember Mueller.
Mr. Bagaros, can you just make clear for me that the budget will be balanced after this without taking money from reserves? Is that right?
Correct, Councilmember Mueller, the revenue, the revenue increases for the current year exceed the requests, and I want to be very transparent, I want to be incredibly transparent here. We, the personnel budget that is included in the staff report only provides for a portion of the current fiscal year for that staff member. It's just the reality that we are unlikely to hire an individual if the council approves those FTEs until most likely in the February time range. So the the recommendation isn't to fund a hundred percent this year. However, in future years, we will clearly need to fund the full cost of that of those employees that are approved. And one of the key elements that Mr. Jacobson highlighted was the increase in property taxes. That was, we we assumed flat, and they increased one of the highest rates in the county. I it would be remiss of me, it would be remiss of me to suggest that that could continue. However, the historically Menlo Park's property taxes through the Great Recession have been incredibly resilient and have not seen significant decreases. However, they have seen less than, less than what we've recently experienced increases year over year.
But you would expect, at least I would expect that at some point TOT will come back into our budget picture. So we wouldn't necessarily be dependent on increasing in property taxes. We could use TOT budget to absorb debt. So I just wanted to go ahead and crystallize that very clearly that the action that we're being asked to take tonight is still within a balanced budget and not not drawing from reserves. I wanted that to be, and I I appreciate the I appreciate the presentation. I was just trying to make a very clear and concise framing of that. And then and then and then obviously TOT can go ahead and pay for that once that kicks back in, and we had a pretty robust TOT for this COVID nineteen recession started. So thank you very much. I appreciate those are all my questions.
Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. So I had similar questions up to Councilmember Mueller. On the property taxes, you said that that was a nine point two percent increase in property taxes plus ERAF. What was the ERAF portion of it? And in discussing about looking to the future, balancing the budget, since we can't always count on the ERAF, how do you, how does that all work?
Yes, I will ask Mr. Jacobson to join me here for this. Thank you, Dan.
Sure. So in the property tax number that was presented, there were a number of factors. One was the excess ERAF that accounted for approximately one and a quarter million. There is an element of VLF fees that were there, there is an interaction between those at the county level, which has changed the way those are distributed compared to prior years. It is, it has been the city's practice to just budget half of the excess ERAF in any given year in recognition that it is an uncertain revenue source. And the county does keep a portion of the excess ERAF for any fiscal year in reserve. And so I think that that fifty percent budgeting practice is actually reasonably sound.
So I need a little bit more help with this. So if one point two five was the excess ERAF and one point five two of that two point seven seven million is actually the property taxes, what are you counting on for balancing the budget in future years?
Councilmember Nash, I'm not sure that I understand the the question. Your 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 numbers are accurate.
I guess what I'm concerned about is that almost fifty percent of that revenue that we just got in is actually ERAF, which again, as we all agree, is not something we can count on. I hear you saying that you you count on fifty percent of it. But when we're looking not just to this year, but also possibly having challenges next in next year's budget and possibly the year after. Again, I'm listening to Councilmember Mueller's question about are we still balancing the budget? Can we count on if we add these headcount that we will still be balancing the budget beyond this year where we had that bonus extra ERAF?
Okay, so I I think I understand the question. So so the the city council does still retain the ability to balance the budget in any given fiscal year. And so going forward for the next fiscal year, the council will have full discretion over how the budget is developed and what is approved and adopted in that budget. And so to the extent that either there is an indication that excess ERAF should be lowered below fifty percent or not included, that can be incorporated into the budget development process. I do want to point out that the number that's included here is the the addition to what was adopted in the budget for property taxes. The property tax budget is substantially higher than that when looked at in full. It is, in fact, orders of magnitude larger than that. This is just the incremental amount above what was adopted for the current fiscal year's budget.
So when in looking to balance the budget in for future years, you're not, we're not counting on that extra?
It has not been the practice to count on the exit, the sort of the second half distribution of excess ERAF until it is until it can be, there there is a better sense that it will be received.
So thank you. I understand that part. I'm just wondering if what we're doing tonight is in any way countering that.
So I I believe that the the effect that this that these amendments would have on the general fund budget is to increase the surplus by approximately one point zero five million. So that's not radically far off of the fifty percent excess ERAF number, if if that helps to put it in perspective.
Okay, thank you. I'll think about that a little bit more. And then what is the status of the TOT? I understand last time when I was asking, it wasn't due until October thirty first. So now that we're in November, how does it look?
There's no information strongly one direction or the other that would indicate that there needs to be an amendment at this point.
Have we, we have, we had given hotel owners the leeway to not submit their TOT until October thirty first, have they, are people catching up or are are the hotels catching up? Or are we seeing that we're not getting that revenue in? But this is, this is what we've already, what has already been the TOT that's already been collected but has not been remitted to the city.
So it it has been remitted at this point. So the the operators for short term rentals have remitted the TOT that was that there was a waiver granted on on late penalties.
And all of it's been, and all of it's come in?
I I would have to double check that, but I have not heard from the finance team that there have been any delinquent payments.
Okay, thank you. It would be, it'd be great at some point to get it soon to get feedback on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council before we go to public comment? Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Ms. Heron, can we take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on agenda item J two regarding amending the city council adopted twenty 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 one budget and salary schedule, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the ability to open up your microphone and address this. And our first public commenter will be Lynn Bramlett. Lynn, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Good evening, City Council and staff. Can you hear me? Okay, so we have very uncertain economic times right now, as Councilmember Nash brought up. The unemployment rate in California is eleven percent. A number of our residents are have lost their jobs, they're hurting in our businesses. I I don't think it's a good idea to add staff during a pandemic. And you know, I think to me, it just sends the wrong message. And I think also, we haven't heard about what has been pointed out before, that Menlo Park is overstaffed compared with other cities our size. And I've seen this data myself. I don't have it right here in front of me. But when that point is brought up, it seems there's agreement to that. But we hear, we offer more services, but I've yet to see any survey taken of what services we don't want and we happily eliminate. And just like tonight, I didn't hear, you didn't hear anything about an analysis to see what staff could possibly be shifted around, how volunteers might help, you know, et cetera. So I'm really concerned about how this is going to look in terms of solidarity with our residents who are helping to pay for this. And just based on you know, economic indicators, I think we're looking at a pretty soft economy for quite some time. I'm also a little bit concerned based on some documentation related to the formation of Connect Menlo. So when California shut down redevelopment districts, the staff organization was going to take a hit to eleven point something jobs. They were very concerned, and Connect Menlo was explicitly about money to help save those jobs, at least at the beginning. And so if you if you agree tonight to add more staff, you know, they're going to be around, it's going to be hard to adjust later. And what could happen later is, gee, if there's a shortfall, let's have the next development, you know, plan to, you know, pay for this. So I think it's kind of time, I really hope you will hold the line or at least ask for more justification for this before you agree. I I also request that we get a PDF of the budget document online, that we could just print the whole thing out because it's pretty hard to follow these changes. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for any public comment on item J two regarding the city council twenty 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 one budget. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for the public comment, Ms. Bramlett, Councilmember Carlton. You're on mute.
Excuse me, I apologize for that. The I saw that a number of the staff that are on this list are inspectors and and building staff. When, first of all, when we add these people, usually it's because we have building going on and I know a ton of people right now beyond the developers are redevelop are redeveloping their home, they're remodeling their homes. Everybody's been trapped here and suddenly discovered they need more room. I've been trying to hire an architect myself, and it's 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 very busy right now. Correct me if Correct me if I'm wrong. The building staff, the, the cost of those salaries, the cost of those people is covered by the fees that we charge developers and people when they build and remodel homes. Is that correct?
Yes, councilmember Carlton. I, I do want to, if I could, Judy, if I could just project my screen for a second. I want to just clarify which positions we have. Let's see. Jump screen. No, oops, you can see my desktop, my messy desktop. Okay. So the councilmember Carlton, I just want to be clear that the new FTEs that are, that are being requested as part of this budget process are not building inspectors or construction inspectors. Those are the new job classifications. And so we're not asking for any new FTE. These are the positions that are the new FTEs.
Okay, but senior planners, planners are, are covered by the fees that we charge, are they not?
It depends on which projects they're working on. So if they are working on long-range planning projects, then typically, and community development director or assistant community development director can clarify if I'm incorrect here. But a portion of the directors typically paid for through indirect charges for their management, senior planner, it would depend on which projects they're assigned.
So see, senior planner, associate planner, you know, these look like people that would normally work on, on different things that are covered. You, you don't know how much of them is, is going to be covered?
If, and Deanna, if you're available, I'm sorry, I can't see.
Yes, hi. Hi, thank you, Deanna Chow, Assistant Community Development Director. So thank you, councilmember Carlton, and good evening, mayor and councilmembers. So yes, typically, as councilmember Carlton mentioned, planners who do work on development projects are cost recovery in terms of billing towards their time, towards projects and building permits. What we have here are requests for some of our long-range planning efforts. So much of the work that we do is considered baseline work. We respond to discretionary permits, building permits, car service. But what we have here are items that are typically considered long-range planning or advanced planning. And as Mr. Pogueras mentioned, they typically are not reimbursable. These are things that the city engages in. They're not done for a private applicant, which then reimburses the city for our services.
So they're, they're covering the, the projects that the city council is putting forward?
That is correct. And it allows our current planners to maintain focus on the projects, the construction projects that you were mentioning.
All right, and then in the future, if the work goes down, we can remove, remove these positions as we've done before? Is that correct?
And maybe Mr. Pogueras would like to address this, but you know, we could look at, potentially looking at terms for these particular positions to address demand. But these were positions that were part of our previous budget cycle because of the demand that we saw, but unfortunately were vacant at the time of our budget. And so they were eliminated during, during that cycle. So there is probably demand in our, in our projects, but certainly these would assist in fulfilling our project priorities and work plan items that the council would like to move forward.
Okay. In some cases, but for example, we have one title and it gets divided up into three. Do you have a problem there where the positions, there's, there's slippage? And, and one gets paid more than the next and more than the next because you've got impaction and the other? And it becomes a slippery slope to charging, to, to that, those individuals in that role being paid more? Or I'm saying is, is there an unintended consequence that might impact the cost of those individuals? Or is it purely, purely title?
Councilmember Carlton, are you, you're referencing the construct, the job families, the construction inspector, one, two, senior? Is that, yes. So the, consistent with our, with the practice that we've used in the past, there is a differential between the different, between the steps. In the construction inspector series, for example, we currently have just construction inspector. We do not have construction inspector one, construction inspector two, or construction, or senior construction inspector. The individual who is currently classified as a construction inspector would convert to a construction inspector two in this schema. And if responsibilities are provided to that individual that, that warrants the advancement to the senior level, then that individual or those individuals in the future would be, would be moved and would, would be promoted effectively into the senior role. There's a, the, the test really is what duties are being assigned? What are the, what expertise does the individual possess? And are they providing a level, or are they fulfilling the needs of the organization?
I, I just remember years ago, we were told that we were going to create a new police position and it was all going to be great. It was just going to help for career progression. And then suddenly there was an impaction problem and suddenly there was, and, and it caused some, some unintended consequences later on. And I just wanted to make sure that wasn't going to happen here.
That, no, that we do not, with these police classification, I believe you're referencing is corp, is the corporal position. And it's a, that's a slightly different dynamic.
Okay, and I just wanted to say this because I thought potentially people can get confused. I see that the, the chief water operator title changed. And when, when you see titles and people being mentioned in one budget that actually are in another budget, people might think that that person is related to this one. And I, I've confirmed with the city manager that the, the people working in the water area do have their own budget and that's being listed just because of title change. And that person has, is, is not in this budget. And, you know, you know that, we know that, but I want to make sure it's completely transparent to other people that are seeing it. So I, I see that there is a note at the bottom, basically saying it's a title change, it's no difference in salary or whatever. But it, it might be good just in the future, just to make sure there's no confusion, to put a little note and, and remind people that that's actually coming out of a, a different budget. And I'm happy to see we're looking at, at how to fix and how to adjust the processes. Because once you get the processes working more effectively and efficiently, we don't need to hire more people. It actually runs more efficiently and in a more timely way in and of itself. I have some questions about the police and I don't know if, if the chief is available to answer questions or if you would like to answer questions about the police.
Interim Police Chief Spiller is in the audience. I'm hoping he can join us here.
I was trying to get your hearing.
Hi, nice to, nice to speak to you. I saw on J2.19 that out of 9,338 citations issued in 2019, 200 of those, where do the citations come from? That, are those the citations that are, are done by the people who aren't in the traffic unit or?
Councilmember Carlton, if you can forgive me, I think your screen froze. So I didn't capture the context of your question, if you could repeat it for me.
I'm sorry, I was just saying that I, in page 2.19, it talks about 900, 338 citations used in 2019. The traffic unit was responsible for 3,164 of those citations. The other 200 citations, did they come from basically police officers who weren't in the traffic unit? Or where did, or they, this is when we might've still had the traffic camera? I was just wondering where the other citations generally come from?
Yeah, so the balance of the citations in that circumstance would come from patrol resources that have the ability to write those citations, observe those violations and issue the citations.
Okay, and the traffic unit stopped in July, is that correct?
The traffic unit actually continued until they formally stopped in October. So the, because of a, the police schedule, the, the seniority sign up and the police schedule ran through October. So the traffic resource actually remained on the street until the conclusion of that shift, the, the patrol schedule. So they, they finished in, in early October.
Okay, so it's been what, a month that we haven't had the, the, the traffic?
Yeah, just less than a month, yes.
I'm sorry, cut out, I'm sorry, what?
Yes, it's been approximately a month. I think your screen froze again, I'm not sure if you had any questions.
I'm sorry, I'm having a bandwidth day. So I guess I'm curious, what happened in that month? How many, what was the difference on, on how many citations were given? Were there any collisions, deaths, any injuries? Like, I'm, I'm just wondering what, what that impact was?
So the, the citations issued are down. I don't actually have the numbers for you. We have not had any fatal collisions. We continue to investigate fairly regularly property damage collisions as well as injury collision. So that, that occurs regularly. Not having the traffic resources is significantly impactful, not only to patrol, but to the service delivery within the community.
Okay, so one, one of the things that I've, you've heard me say this before. One of the things I love about Menlo Park is when I've had to call the police, the police are there in like three minutes, five minutes. You know, it's, it's, it's tremendous if you've ever lived in another city to call the police. It takes 30 minutes or an hour, you'd be dead by the time they come. And I, and I've been super impressed with, with how responsive. I, I think the other day when they had someone, I believe they got a shotgun off someone and said in the, in the report I read, that the police officer happened to be in the area and was there within one minute and was able to make sure that no one got hurt. And they, they took a shotgun off the street, sawed-off shotgun, as I remember correctly. I don't remember if it was a 12, 20 gauge. But my question is, as, as we consider putting more people on the street, does that mean that if someone is in a life or death situation, the police can get there that much more quickly because there are more police on the street? Or the more police, what, how does the, the, the traffic police impact when someone has a critical situation where minutes count? Does it have an impact or does it not? I, I, I mean, I, I don't know how you schedule and how it works.
Yeah, so it does have an impact. I think there's a lot of layers here. So there's a couple of things in play. First, to address the issue of traffic. So in, in our current patrol staffing, at our current staffing level, it's, I wouldn't describe it as razor thin, but you know, when we're, when we're in a situation at minimum staffing, for example, we've got X number of patrol resources in the field and the officers are responding to calls for service, they're responding to disturbances, they're responding to investigate a burglary, whatever the case may be. Those officers are either en route to those details or they're on scene investigating. And it impacts the ability to proactively address traffic. So when we have complaints, when we have issues of people running stop signs or, or speed problems, or we notice that our injury collisions are up in a particular area of town, it's more difficult to dedicate resources from the patrol to, to deal with those. So having a dedicated traffic resource is a significant incentive from a safety perspective and from a staffing perspective. Now, if you look at the resources of traffic in the community, you can have two traffic officers on day shift or late afternoon shift and they can be working. And they might be, you know, monitoring areas of town and dealing with complaints. And they might happen to be around the corner from the call, you know, it just occurred detail that's being dispatched and they stop the clock because they get there really quickly. So for lack of a better way to describe it, you know, having those traffic resources, almost a force multiplier because it further resources that, those uniform personnel in the field. The other point I'll make to that is there's another position, another FTE that's listed here, that's the community service officer. So this is a non-sworn paraprofessional that is a uniform position in the field. So if we had a significant scene that needed to be processed for fingerprint or evidence collection, that non-sworn position, that professional staff member could be on scene doing the, the detailed evidence collection and free up the sworn police officer to be in service, to be more readily available to respond for a call for service and minimize that emergency response time. So all of those things come into play as it relates to the request before you.
And since it's been such a short period of time, it's really hard to quantify things with or without this, this unit working. I, I think a month is, is a very short period of time for anything, you know, substantial to be able to, to see. But I do know that overtime is, is very expensive and something that we usually try and avoid. Has the, the cut in staff produced more overtime? Or just fewer people doing the work or less work being done, I guess is what I'm saying?
I wouldn't say less work being done, I would say fewer people doing the work. So the only time overtime would come into play is if we fall below a safe minimum staffing level and we're, you know, somebody is needed to, to cover a patrol allocation for a particular shift. And that might be for a sick call or, you know, whatever the case may be. So I wouldn't say that overtime is significantly on the increase. But the, the resources in the field aren't what, aren't necessarily ideal. So, you know, to be able to address the traffic issues, that's why the specific request was advanced.
All right. I, my, I have the first do no harm viewpoint in terms of, I don't want to explain to someone that we lost a life or that someone had something really bad happen to them. And heck, I guess it even comes down to having them around makes people drive more safely and, and lets children on walking school and on bicycles potentially be, be safer. And I have to admit, I'm not a fan of the, the parking police downtown, but that's another discussion. License plate readers, we passed those six years ago. It doesn't seem like six years is a long time. Is that normal to have to replace them so quickly?
So we procured the cameras in 2014. I think the original study was done in 2013, but we originally procured the equipment in 2014. They are mobile systems that are attached to police cars. So there's three systems that are attached to three separate police vehicles and they are mobile throughout town. It is not unusual for that kind of technology to, to term itself out in that period of time. So as we replace the vehicles, the need, the, the necess, the, the need to upgrade the equipment is a requirement as well. And the aged equipment can't necessarily handle the updated software that exists on the, on the, with the provider that we have contracted with. So yeah, it's, it's time to have them replaced. They exceeded, exceeded their useful life.
Okay, um, I am, I am in favor of bringing on the, the police officers requested because I think it's a matter of safety. Not only if somebody has someone breaking in their home, but, but just safety for, for, as we're trying to, children are never going to ride their bike or walk to school till mom thinks they're safe. I, I'm a mom. And I want to make sure that the parents feel comfortable, that their children are safe, well, and their husbands and whoever, as they, as they walk and bike. If, I, I don't want to micromanage because you're the expert in this. If, I don't want to micromanage because you're the expert in this, however, I can give you my humble opinion, I would really like to see us bring on as much diversity as possible as we bring people onto the police force. I think that resonates better on many levels. So I leave you with that thought.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And thank you for answering my questions, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Are there any, I was going to ask if there are any follow up questions for Chief Spiller from anyone else on council? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. Just whether or not there's any other funding for the equipment rather than going through the general fund?
For the equipment? You're not talking about personnel, you're talking about the equipment?
Equipment, thank you.
There are other equipment grants, but in this particular case, the grant that we have available to us does not allow us to supplant what's already been budgeted, and because we have the ALPRs or the automated license plate readers in the budget, and it's needed for a replacement, it wouldn't qualify for the grant that we have.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, it's because it's replacement or it's because it's in the budget?
Well, it's a budgeted item, so it's an item that we've had, that we procured, and its replacement is required because it's, you know, the system is aging. The, we have a citizens' option for public safety grant, which precludes us from using that money for, to supplant budgeted items. So I guess it will.
The only reason I ask, excuse the interruption, isn't this the budgeting of the item? So it's not really?
Yeah, so if the council chose not to fund this and it was no longer budgeted, then we would pursue other funding options if we, if we were going to use one of our equipment grants, we could pursue that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Spiller. So are there any other clarifying questions on this item for staff? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. When you say clear on this item, are you talking about generally the whole report?
Yes.
Thank you. One of the questions that I have is, these are amendments to the current budget, and as Ms. Bramlett said, and I spoke with the city manager yesterday, it's right now not having a paper copy of the budget, it's been difficult to figure out what the original item was. So I guess one question is, on some of these items, and I guess, well, I'm having trouble approving these items not knowing what the original amount is that we're adding to. So these are amendments to the budget, I believe, but it doesn't have the original budgeted amount. So I just, like the, where was one? Just like the market, the BMR, increase in the BMR costs. I'm busy trying to grab this here. The below market rate housing fund, I believe something was in the original budget. Now we're asking, now we're getting a request for $80,000 more. What I'd love to know is what was the original amount? And just so that, all of these are not standalones, I believe they're adding, in most cases are adding to an original budgeted amount, which I, it'd be nice to have that number in front of us, too.
Understood, Councilmember Nash. And if that, the, I just want to make one distinction, that the, the difference between the budget that was adopted and the amendment is, is the, is clearly a very important consideration. I would say that what was originally budgeted does not include anything that we're asking for in this particular amendment. So the augment in the example that you provided for the BMR, we are augmenting services that, we are augmenting services from, in that example, from 70,000 to 150,000 for managing that particular program and that portfolio. And so I guess the, we can do it if that's, if that's what we, the council would like to see. And I just, the only new piece of information that you would have is $70,000 of existing spending and $80,000 of new spending. And if that's necessary, then we can, more than, we can do that work.
I would like to see that. Very honestly, in addition, I would love to see, when we're asking for new headcount, what is the existing headcount in that area that we're then being asked to augment? And I realize these are all for special projects, it's just seeing these as standalone items, it's much harder for me to evaluate than when I see the whole picture, given that we're in the, we've just finished the first year of the, I'm sorry, the first quarter of the budget. I am interested in where we are. Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller?
May I speak with this? So I just want to make sure, what's before today is what's been recommended by staff is to make the city function? Like, everyone sat down, got in a room, talked about what they needed in order to go forward as we're coming out of this crisis?
City manager, Councilmember Mueller, I'm sure the city manager would like to comment on that. I would just say that it's a combination of that, but the primary focus, quite frankly, is providing the resources necessary to move the priorities and the work plan forward, the identified work plan projects. That is the bulk of the budget request. And so, for example, if the 9.8 million is not amendment for the MPCC, MPCC project is something the council does not want to do, that would fundamentally change that project, because we do need that money in order to move forward. So similarly with the 2022 housing element, the, I believe it's 1.6, 1.7 million dollars, if the council does not appropriate that, those funds, we'll have to figure out what the Plan B is. And quite frankly, I don't know that there is a realistic Plan B for something that large as a housing element.
Yeah. Ms. Robinson?
Well, I think Mr. Piguero summarized it quite nicely. I, we're trying to match the resources to the council's priorities, and if the council doesn't want to fund those, then we'll just, we'll understand that and do what we can with the resources we have available.
So I just, I actually, if this is the recommendation, professional recommendation of staff, then I'm, and the budget's balanced, I'm perfectly fine accepting professional recommendations of staff as it matches council's goals and priorities. So the only thing that I would just add is, and I think we've talked about it in the past, Mr. M. Robinson, is I know during our budget process, we talked about withdrawing from the PLS. The more I've learned about that over time, the less I'm inclined I am to want to do that. So I want to make sure I provide that to staff now, if staff's working on that, I think I saw an RFP go out on that. And so I think it's fair for me to share that through this process. The other thing I want to know is, are we amending the budget tonight, or are we just providing our direction and amending it at a future meeting?
The proposal is to amend it tonight, with the understanding that it will take us some time to actually go through the recruitment process for these positions, so we'd like to get started if we can.
Well, we cut significantly back in, well, we cut, it wasn't actually that long ago, but we started this process a long time ago. But you know, as long as the budget is balanced, I'm going to be supportive of staff's recommendation because I know how much we cut before to get here, and these are matching our, the priorities that we put in front of our professional staff. So I trust that you guys need in order to execute, so thank you.
Thank you. And if I can just add, the RFP, I think will be coming back for consideration, the responses to the RFP in January. No action will be taken without further direction from the city council.
Yeah, I just thought it was fair to share with staff and my colleagues that I'm really not inclined at this point to do withdrawal from the PLS. So, and it's a little library system for those who are wondering what the acronym means. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash and then Councilmember Carlton.
Thank you. A few things, one is that I am not disinclined to make these changes. I do have questions about some of them, and I like to have the context within which to see how much we are actually increasing budgets that are already there and what we are doing. So it's not that I am saying I don't want to vote for any of this, and I just like to have the context within which to make these decisions. Having said that, a couple other comments. One is, I also am disinclined to change from the PLS system, as Councilmember Mueller just said. And there are, I will let Councilmember Carlton speak next, but I'd like to return to a number of these items where I do have questions about them. Thank you.
Councilmember Carlton?
I was actually going to make a motion. I'm happy to make a motion and then continue, continue to this, the discussion afterwards, but I'm in support of this. The only, the only thing that kind of perked my ears a little bit is, previous police chiefs, I think have been pretty, pretty aggressive about going out and getting a lot of, or grants that were available as they were available. And when we look at replacing LPRs and things like that, surely we know what the life cycle is, is these things cycle through. And I would love to see the police continue to apply for those grants where they're available. I know they're, they're not always there, but you know, that is always appreciated. But beyond that, I'm happy to move approval.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. I actually have a couple of questions, and just, I guess, Mr. Pigueros. And this is just going to the recommendation list, I'll ask my questions from there. For recommendation number five, salary schedule amendment to update classification, that specific item doesn't require any budget amendment, it's an amendment to the salary schedule only.
Correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And then just to follow up on a comment that Ms. Bramlett made, and it's just, how many staff persons do we have compared to what we had before we made our budget cuts?
Sure, if the city clerk will allow me to project my screen, please. Okay, so staff provided, as, staff has prepared the, the staffing levels over the last three fiscal years by department. So you'll see there that in the, in last year's budget process, we, last year's budget process, we decreased staffing by, we went from 286.75 positions to 242.75 positions. And as I mentioned earlier, a bulk of those, about, I think it's about 28 of those were vacant positions that were eliminated, they were eliminated from the budget strictly because they were vacant and would not require a layoff. We did lay off 16 regular full-time employees and 120 temporary employees.
Thank you, Mr. Pigueros. And then another question is hiring a consultant versus hiring a new FTE? And the work that has been identified that staff is requesting, so can you walk me through? With the nine FTEs, clearly you're looking to hire full-time employees, so what if that was contracted out or consultant?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would, I would say that it's investment in an employee, in adding a team member to our organization is a, is an incredible commitment, both for the individual and for the organization. And for, as long as I've been with Menlo Park and as long as I've been in municipal finance, there has always been a sort of an unstated rule or guidance that we do our best to identify one-time costs through consultants to get work done so that we don't artificially increase or necessarily increase the headcount. And I guess what I would, what I would share, a great example of that is the consulting services component of the 2022 housing element. That is a project that comes around every seven or so years, and we don't staff for that particular project, which will, seven years from now or however many years from now, once the 2022 element is, is staff is completed, the consultants will go away, the staff that are included in that particular item will move to other projects. There are a number of projects in that particular area of the city, or that particular topic, subject matter. And then seven years from now, we're going to come back to the council and ask for another couple million dollars, million and a half dollars for the next housing element update. So what I would, what I would share with you is, in every instance possible, we have, we have recommended the use of consulting services. There are significant limitations to consultants by way of daily duties, consistency in work product, there is a need to manage consultants in order to ensure that they're delivering the services that they're required to deliver. And so just in summary, we've, I believe we've made every effort to identify outsourcable type projects and roles that, in a, in a sustainable manner, and the FTE count in front of the council this evening is, is reflective of that.
Thank you, Mr. Pigueros. I, Councilmember Nash, go ahead, because I need to look back at my list.
I was just going to say, just whenever you're done, I do have questions.
So go ahead.
Okay. I had questions on the outdoor dining grant program, and just, could I get more information about that? What was the idea, was to use $100,000? How many grants, what size of the grants? Currently, it says outdoor dining facilities, would that be other? Currently it says outdoor dining facilities. Would that be other establishments as well? Just how is this, what was this being envisioned as? And sort of what would happen to the current people who have, are finishing up their five-year permits right now, where they're one of the original groups? They were, my understanding is we were telling them that they would be going to month to month. What would the new, sort of, how do all these programs work together? And what was envisioned, especially right now, when there's a number of people who've already set themselves up in the dining, in the programs, what happens to them? And we're now at 50% dining indoors, assuming that people actually start feeling comfortable doing that. It just, I'm, have a lot of questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. I, the origins of this particular request is, is responsive to feedback that we have heard from, and the council has heard several times in discussions of, of the Santa Cruz Avenue closures and the outdoor dining requirements, or outdoor, the limitations on indoor dining and some of the adaptations that are, that our restaurants have made to provide seating outdoors. The, the grant program is intended to streamline a, a process that will likely add an, 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 will, will add a process that, that takes several months. And in, in trying to think creatively about how we might be able to offer some assistance to dining establishments, not just in the downtown area, but potentially around the city, what mechanisms might we explore, might, what options might we have in order to do that? And so this was a, this is a, in response to that, there are lots of details that would need to be worked out clearly to your question. We would model it after the downtown street cafe program in many regards. Although we would hope to find a nonprofit partner who could administer it for us.
So what is being requested tonight?
So the request tonight is to move forward with further development of the program. And if we, and when we do find the appropriate nonprofit, we could, we could come back to the council with the final action, but this would create the budget appropriation.
Okay, I will just go on record that I'm, I'm very interested in helping, doing whatever we can for our businesses and supporting them. I would like to see more information before approving this and sort of knowing what, what are the constraints? Before we had, looking at the old program, which was a pilot and trying to get it off the ground, which I believe it is at this point. It originally started at 10 or 20,000, I think it was $20,000 support. Then it went up to 45 and then the cap was off. So that's why, you know, for $100,000, I'd like to know how many, first of all, just how many people would it even, how many businesses could it support? Just what is the idea behind this? So I'd love to see this come back before, before approving it. Another question I have is about the water and solid waste customer rate assistance. And just what does that look like? Again, um, we've had two different study sessions on that. In both of them, I believe that the council direction was to explore the, the options there. And in fact, the costs that we were looking at in those study sessions were about 90% underestimated. So we really have not looked at what this, what such a program would look like. I think that we all would like to help people who are in financial hardship. But once we start a program, I think it's something that would be very difficult not to continue, which means that we have a budget implication. We know nothing about just sort of what that would look like, how we would go about doing that. In fact, I mean, there's more, this is more flushed out than the downtown plan. But just how we are spending our resources, I think is really important right now. And I'd like more information to do that. I also would certainly throw out the idea of possibly providing more, the money instead, trying, instead of trying to do a separate program for water and solid waste, maybe providing more finances to Samaritan House and allowing them to cover people who are have financial hardship in the utilities area and not adding yet another program, but allowing them to have more flexibility and more funding. So I'll, I'll let Mayor Taylor, let's go back to Mayor Taylor, Taylor's questions at this point.
Actually, I wanted to follow up with you, Councilmember Nash, if there was a question in there from Mr. Figueros. To make sure it didn't get lost.
Thank you. I guess just, I don't know how much it's missed for Mr. Figueros and how much it's for the rest of the council. Just at this point, I would, you know, these are both programs which I would like to see more information about before funding. Again, I think there are budget implications both right now and for the future to start programs in these areas. And I'd like more information before saying yes, let's go on it. I guess one other piece is in addition on the water part portion. Cal, the program would be for municipal water users. Cal Water Users already fund financial, financial hardship program within, it's a mandated program that's already part of Cal Water Users' bills. So we are now asking a portion of the city to, half the residents to provide an additional support for other residents. It just, I think we need to take a closer look at some of, some of what we are doing. That's not the case in the solid waste where everybody's in the same program. But I believe there's more to, to, no pun intended, flush out before we go down this, down this path. So no question, I, I don't know how many questions, what questions I have right now for Mr. Figueros as much as for my fellow council members. You know, do others feel ready to, to take this step?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Nash. I, one of the, the long-term fiscal sustainability of, of any type of program, whether it be rate assistance for our lower income or financially struggling residents in the garbage area, or, I mean, in, in solid waste or in the Menlo Park water is, is a sort, it's, it's a tough policy decision and discuss, and discussion and, and program to create. And it, and just by virtue of the way state law works with regard to utility rates, except for Cal Water and some of the private utilities, municipalities that operate utilities or, or contract franchise, we can't use ratepayers to subsidize other ratepayers. So in this situation, if we want to go down the path of providing some relief, my, my thought in this particular proposal is we have one-time money from the, from the CARES Act reimbursement that if we don't spend, that'll go to the general fund, fund balance this year. It'll just, it'll simply add another $440,000 to our surplus. And that, there's nothing wrong with that. The council may decide, or there may be other opportunities in the future to make use of those funds. The, the, we can produce more analysis of the low income or the reduced rate program. I don't know that that can be done in time for the rate increases. And I'm not suggesting that that's, that that should necessarily be a driving consideration, but it is a consideration that the rates are increasing on January 1. For the solid waste folks, for the solid waste customers. With regard to the businesses, there's also a timing consideration. And, and so I think that what is before the council this evening is a, is really a somewhat creative proposal to, to address a need that has some time constraint and some time, time considerations that, that are in play. And, you know, we have, I believe we have two more council meetings until the end of the year where we have business. And one of those, the packet goes out tomorrow. The other of those is quite full. So just trying to manage staff capacity, staff bandwidth, we can do as much research and analysis as the council desires. I just don't know how quickly we'll be able to turn that around. And of course, we do want to provide you with the information you need to make a sound decision. So I'll stop talking.
Thank you. I guess, um, for downtown, I, I, I believe that both of these actually deserve a more robust discussion by council, not necessarily a lot more staff work at this point. I don't, but I don't, just tucking them into the budget this way. To me, I don't feel prepared to approve them without, these are two items without a more robust discussion. I guess I will also pull out one other, which is just for comment, and that's the 2022 housing element, which on that one, as far as I'm concerned, we can't go fast enough. And I would actually challenge whether there's any way to move up the timeline so that we get the RFP out. We're one of the earlier cities to get the RFP out and perhaps have a greater selection of consultants. And also have the opportunity to start our, or start our housing element early because I do think it's going to be a, a long, intense process with a lot of community outreach. And I think that as soon as we can start on that, the better. And I, I guess, having said all that, I greatly appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I wish I had adequate time to have done some community outreach with, given this information that we got on Friday to actually get more feedback to make these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. I, I do understand your concerns, especially when it comes to community outreach and just listening to what, what our residents are concerned with. I was actually surprised, we only had one person for public comment. But I think that some folks are still adapting to the new process of how we conduct our city council meetings and how the public interacts with the council because we can't see them. We rely on our, our city clerk to reach out for public comment. And sometimes it works out well for people and sometimes it doesn't. So, and just to talk about a couple of other things that you brought up, Councilmember Nash. What I'm hearing is just, there's a whole lot here. And so it makes it hard to, just to approve everything in one motion. And so, and that I, I do appreciate, which is why I was, I was attempting to go with Mr. Figueros one by one on the, the five items that are on the recommendation list. I did speak with our city manager, especially when we're talking about hiring staff, to find out if there were any staff that were laid off that we could bring back. But essentially, the positions that we froze during the budget process, those positions, there was no one in them. So there was, there's actually no staff to bring back. These would all be new staff persons. So that's one piece. The second piece is that the, the large, the large, the staff that, that we're being asked to approve, the largest items on here, the highest expense rather, are the community development director, the senior planner, and I think there was one other. And those three positions collectively are somewhere around, and Mr. Figueros, correct me if I'm wrong, somewhere around $650,000 for those three positions. And so when I look through the staff report, that was the first thing that caught my eye, even though I know that in order to get the work done for the housing element, those staff persons need to be hired to get that work done. And so I do understand, to say in all that, Councilmember Nash, I do understand your concerns because we are approving a lot of things just in one motion. And if you're more comfortable taking two items at a time, that would help you. That's also option as well. And Councilmember Mueller, I saw your hand up.
I just wanted to make the point that one of the reasons why I'm comfortable is because we went through such a lengthy budget process earlier in the year where we cut down things pretty severely and made some pretty direct choices. And I am, I do believe that staff has brought us forward with their recommendations based on the priorities that we've identified. So I'm comfortable that I have an understanding of what we did prior and I'm comfortable of why they brought forward what's before us now. And so it's not a situation where, I mean, it's not even been, it hasn't even really been three or four months since we really went through a very detailed budget process. So I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable this evening. But I just wanted to share that, that logic with you, what war I am in, why I'm in. It's helpful.
Thank you. Yes, it is. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, thanks. I'll, I'll sort of share where I'm at also. So the, the last thing I want to do is, is, is micromanage staff and decisions and recommendations. Especially when, like, obviously at the staff level, there's, they have so much more visibility into things than, than I do. But there are, there, there's lots here and, and, and so while, if, if there are sort of three votes to approve all of this, then I, I think that, that's great. Let's, let's see if, if they're there and get that approval. I don't think I could be one of those three votes. And, and, and it's, it's just, again, you know, not wanting to micromanage, there's a lot, lot here though. Like if we look at sort of one, the license plate readers, right? I'd actually like that to come as an individual item where there's an analysis of that program. I, you know, I have expressed historically some skepticism of these programs, right? In the same way as, as I expressed some skepticism of the Retlight Camera program, right? And so I would like to see this, you know, if these, if this equipment is coming to the end of their, their useful life, I would actually like to see that as an opportunity for the council, to see if this council is aligned with the, the prior council that, that first, you know, initiated that program. And so here, here, you know, again, if it's packaged all here, I don't, I don't have that, that option. I think that it's, it's, it's hard, again, going back to like, like a lot of this cost, if you look just at the sort of community director position. It's, 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 it's hard for me to see like exactly like how, like having that position sort of like then allows all of, or is the best usage of, of allowing some of these projects to, to perceive or these priorities, right? And, and whether it is like, you know, I can see like, like sort of who's doing this, this work, right? And at what level? And again, not wanting to micromanage, but, but I just sort of have, you know, if there's seemingly a lot, lots of work that needs to be done, then, then generally it's like you look for, you know, more foot soldiers, right? And, and, and not necessarily adding on to, to, to the management. And 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 not necessarily adding on to, to, to the management layer. And and so and so I have some, some skepticism about that. Maybe it is, again, like I say, it is, it is not rooted in in as much information as it should be. And I don't have the insight that 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 staff does, but but as I sit here, it's, it's what sort of, it is one of the concerns. And then generally, again, there is the overall concern of that, again, we just went through this long process where we eliminated a number of these, these positions, you know, not because we wanted to or not because we didn't think that there were value in them, but specifically as it related to budget concerns and concerned about the long-term economic outlook of the state. And I don't know that that has changed, that that, I mean, as as people say, the stock market is not the economy. So yes, the stock market is doing great, but there is a lot of signal that that the economy is is still in for, we're still on for a rough ride ahead, specifically as we go into to winter and it's not clear. And and as, as, as infection rates regarding, you know, COVID-19 increase. And so that's where, where, where I sit and that's my concern. But again, I totally respect and again, this goes against my, my natural inclination, which is to to not micromanage. And so, but but there's just a lot of different things here and and I don't, and 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 there's enough of them that gives me pause where I certainly, where I don't feel like I could vote and, and, you know, on this package in its entirety. But if if there are three votes for that, then then I think that that's, you know, that's fine. I'm not, I wouldn't object to that in any way. I would say since, since at least three of us have, have, at least two of us have mentioned the Peninsula Library System and a desire to sort of step back from, from that. I actually would like to see what the RFP results in, but but if, if if there seems like we're, we're not, there are some, some, some new concerns that have have arisen, then again, totally willing for them, for, for the council to possibly step, step back from that. But but I would, you know, again, I would be interested and see what, what, what do these RFP or what does this RFP result in? It could be that, like, at the end of the day, we get from it a clear signal that the PLS is the, the best, best, best sort of route for, for this situation. So again, those are, are some, some sort of untethered thoughts of, of, of how I'm, I'm, I'm thinking as, as I, as I take this all in.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna be candid. I don't think that we are at a forcing point where it's actually a good thing to be having a split vote on a budget in a budget process. So there's like, there's no deadline in front of us right now. It's, would be forcing a split vote. So I would just, if, you know, if, if we have two colleagues who aren't comfortable, of course, we have three, but if we have two or uncomfortable or even one who is comfortable, then I think we should try to resolve those things. So so I would just say, colleagues, while I'm comfortable tonight, if you guys want to split stuff out and take your time and go through it, I'm amenable to that. So I'm not, I'm not in any rush. But, but I do, I, I do understand, I think have a pretty clear understanding where staff is coming from. And I've been through the license plate reader process and put in, or we put in, you know, all sorts of privacy around that at the time and went through that, that policy debate, but it's fair to say that you haven't had the opportunity at Councilmember Combs to do that and hear all of that. And it may be that things have changed in the last six years since we discussed it and that would change, change the issue. So if you guys want to have, go have that discussion again, I'm up for that. So so I guess what I'm saying is I'm totally amenable to, to you guys taking your time in the process. So that's fine. I won't be making a motion based on what I've heard.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson.
Well, I'm interested to hear where the council lands on this, but I guess I would ask you to consider at least funding the MPCC tonight, that 9.8 million, if you aren't feeling comfortable about funding anything else. Or, and if you do want to just walk through it, are you thinking about doing that tonight or do you want us to bring it back?
I'll just make the motion on that now.
Okay, thank you.
So I've, I've made the motion on the MPCC for the 9.8 million.
Real quick, I do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Carlton.
No, Mueller.
Well, you had made it earlier in the evening.
People aren't comfortable with, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller, I'll, I'll second, but I, I don't want to pull the whole amount out. I, we talked about first reviewing any grants and we do know of some. And so that's my, my only concern is making note of of that amount less the, the grads available and and other fundraising available.
I don't have a preference. It's fine. I'll take it as a friendly amendment, but I would be just as comfortable with pulling the amount out and then them applying for the grants and deducting it from the budget at the time they got them, but whatever, whatever you're comfortable with.
Okay.
I think Mr. Murphy is here to provide some clarity.
Yes, and and thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Pigueros could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think even for things like grants, we still need to budget for them so we can budget with, then the revenue would be, be the grant. So I just want to double check with Mr. Pigueros whether we need to budget for that grant revenue or not.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. The, to your question, to your point, Councilmember Carlton, the action that the council took in this previous, in the prior agenda item, identified the priority that first we go with grants and contributions and then we go to tier three, which is Measure T. So we will put placeholders in for Measure T at the 8.8 million dollars, a placeholder for grants and contributions of a million dollars. And before we can issue the Measure T bonds, we will do that sort of true up based on what we know at that time. So the 9.8 million is not all Measure T. It's consistent. It, it, it will be a budgeted consistent with council action in the previous item.
Councilmember Carlton, does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Taylor, if I may, I wanted to touch on the salary schedule that doesn't have any effect to the budget. Just an update, did Councilmember Mueller, did you want to include that in your motion or did you want to take that item separately?
Why don't we take it separately and do the one and then we'll talk about the other.
So I do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller, with a second by City Councilmember Carlton to fundamental park community center project as well as previous motion exploring grants and contributions. Is there any further city council discussion or questions? Seeing none, I will call vote, Councilmember Carlton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And on the rest of the budget items, guys, I'll leave it to my colleagues. I'll leave it to you all to make the motions on so that it's a so I know what people feel comfortable with and and not out of respect for everyone in the process.
Councilmember Nash.
Well, I feel comfortable proceeding with housing element minus the two FTEs and the two FTEs, I think I'd like to hear more from other council members, well, to have a discussion on that, but the, I guess, from staff. Mr. Pigueros, what, what would be most helpful on the housing element? Can we would it be helpful if we approve it without the headcount at this point or does, is it only beneficial with the headcount?
Councilmember Nash, I would, so just again, sort of back to timing. The the real constraint with the staffing of this particular request is the time it'll take for us to recruit the position. And so if the council, what I would, what I would offer is that the council, one option could be that the council approves the amendment with the FTEs contingent on staff coming back in January, which is probably most likely when we will be able to get back to you with for, for a more, for a fuller discussion on this. But in the meantime, that allows us to open the recruitment. I, just looking at recruitment's calendars with the holidays, I don't anticipate that we will be interviewing anyone before, before February. You know, there is a risk in doing that in that it may compromise the talent pool. Folks, generally, your, your better candidates will go back and look at council meetings, so they will see this. But I, I think that if we can open the recruitment, that would put us in the optimal position to move forward should the council ultimately give the green light on hiring the positions.
Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. So when is the plan to release the RFP and is it possible to, depending when that is, to push that date up at all?
I'd have to defer to Ms. Chow on, on that timing. I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Hi, good evening, Councilmember Nash. So I, I think we are looking at doing it in a two-phase approach. So the first would be releasing an RFQ to get a qual, a list of qualified consultants. So I have a shortlist. I think we can look to release that before the end of the year. And then amongst the shortlist, then go back with a RFP. So our, our short-term goal would be to try to get the RFQ out before the end of the year.
Thank you. I guess I will offer up that I am actually not, I could support the two FTEs here. I am trying to be sensitive to what Vice Mayor Combs was saying about the level of the people and just, and FTEs recruiting additional people.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Since my name was mentioned, I, I mean, I'll say I could also be supportive.
Councilmember Nash.
So I, I would like to move the 2022 housing item as proposed by staff forward.
Which item is that on the recommendation? Is that number two, Mr. Pigueros? It is number two. Can we put number five in there as well, amending the salary schedule? Friendly amendment.
That's fine with me.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Vice Mayor Combs, I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Nash, and the second by Vice Mayor Combs to approve the housing element budget request contingent on staff returning in early 2021 and approval of the amended salary schedule as proposed by staff. Is there any further city council questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call vote, Councilmember Carlton.
Aye.
City Councilmember Mueller.
Sorry, I had to get that mute button. I, yes.
City Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you. And for Assistant City Manager Pigueros, is there further direction needed for staff?
The council, I apologize, Madam Clerk, the is, is this the, the actions or the, the, the motions are clear to me? I, I don't know if you're asking if we're moving on to the next item.
No, I assume that there might be some more further discussion from the city council, but just making sure that so far we hit on things that staff needs. Wonderful. Thank you.
Councilmember Carlton.
One thing I feel really strongly about is the $100,000 to get approved to restart the program, to work with the restaurants, to allow them to, to build better outside. I know some of them, I've, I've learned my lesson. I'm not going to name, name names unless I have to, but there are restaurants who really wanted to participate last time. And last time was supposed to be a it was supposed to be a trial to see how it worked. And I, I think it's been really successful. I think we all agree on that. And one of the restaurants in particular really wanted to do it and their landlord wasn't convinced to, they didn't want to be on the bleeding edge. And now the landlord is convinced and the rains are coming. And we have a nonprofit who potentially is interested in running the program for us, but we, we have to have a program. We have to have the funds to be able to go to them, to be able to say how, how to move forward. And it starts with 100,000, whether it's 10,000 matching with another 20,000. We need to, we don't, we can't punt this because it takes so much time to do the admin, to get it set up, to, to do the building. And the restaurants desperately need help. They desperately need this program and we've proven the program works. We can run the program in the, in, or ask them to run the program the same way we, we did it before, which I, I thought everyone is pretty happy with. Even, even the people who yelled at me that I was taking their, their parking spaces away have now come back and talked about how nice it is to have that downtown. So I think the residents enjoy it. It's, it's critical for the restaurants, particularly as COVID is not going to go away anytime soon. I mean, please God, I hope that the vaccine that we all read about in the next day or two works, but it's, it's going to be the new year before they even have the the first round of those trials out. It's going to be months away and we have to do everything we can to help the restaurants be able to, to have people sitting outside in, in a way that where the table isn't sitting sideways, where it's actually covered. And and Chuck and our staff do a very good job of really pressing to make sure that, that they're safe. And we've, we've had the program before. We did it as a trial. It worked. We can't move forward until we have the funds earmarked to move forward, even, even using the, the nonprofit to do the admin. I, I see Ray as his hand up.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, we did do this as a trial before and I, like, I was willing to support it as part of the big, I'm willing to support doing this now. I think it's important. My only comment on this is that when we first did this, we did them as sort of trial installations and and we, we gave people grants, but candidly, the quality of them was not could have been better. And that's something that we've heard consistently from from our residents. And if we're doing it, if we're going to now start to make these installations permanent, I'd like the design quality to be sharper. So so that's really sort of a message to our professional staff is if we're going to be doing these at new installations, we need to figure out, and those are going to, those are not, those are permanent installations. I'd like to really increase the design quality of what's going in there. Because prior to COVID starting, what I had hoped was that we would be talking about, at this point, we would have been talking about going into this year, infrastructure improvements to the downtown. And then, and then also working with the current installations to improve the design quality there. And really, and so now I think part of downtown is, you know, I think what we're really talking about are I think what we're really talking about are side streets and places that want, that want them now, that didn't get them earlier. But I'd like to, I'd like to get, get that design quality up. So, and I still, and I don't want to throw another thing on the fire, but I still want to, I still hope in our council goal-setting meeting later in the, later in the winter, that we will figure out a strategic plan of how we will make those infrastructure improvements to the downtown going forward, because it's desperately needed, and, and I think our residents are expecting us to figure out how to do it. And coming out of COVID, I think that we're going to have the opportunity to do that in a way that probably we didn't have before, given a number of vacancies and other opportunities that we'll be looking at there. And the housing element.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. I agree with you with the design of the downtown. They're going to be parklets, but I wanted to find out if there's opportunity to do something more citywide, something a little more broad, since there is outdoor dining and other areas of the city that need some help. And I'm not sure, Mr. Pogaros, if anyone has applied for a permit outside of downtown?
So on this particular item, we, I don't have the, oh, go ahead, Ms. Chow.
So we do have one active applicant. So Koma Sushi did apply for, through the temporary outdoor use permit program downtown for on El Comunal Real, and we had another salon who applied but have not yet received as well.
Thank you. Is there an opportunity to use some of the CARES funding? $100,000 is, is a nice, it's a nice start, just thinking, you know, another $20,000 into the pot. Mr. Pogaros, you did, I'm not sure if it was you or Mr. Jacobson, just brought up how the CARES funding could be used. The potentials.
Yeah, so if we view this, the CARES Act, an unanticipated CARES Act reimbursement to the city totals $440,000. The requests that are before the council for the down, for the COVID pandemic local emergency or $3.370,000 of that 440. If the council wants to make an adjustment to any of those programs, all I can say is that you have the money available if you want to use it.
Thank you, Mr. Pogaros. Councilmember Carlton?
I was just going to say, Mayor Taylor and I had, had discussed this as part of the, the subcommittee for downtown and wanted to make sure that it would be available if there's a restaurant on Willow or in, in other areas, that it's not just downtown. All of our restaurants are struggling, and we need to make sure that all of them stay in business and keep their staff. So I, I would not like it to be not just downtown focused, but to let restaurants and, and places know across the city that it's available for them as, as is, as we're able. Not, not all of them have parking spaces in front, not all of them have that ability, but those that can and are willing, I would like to make sure that they get, or Mayor Taylor and I had discussed previously that we would like to make sure that they're included in this.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I guess I have a number of questions, one of which is how is, how much staff is required to support this? And how does that work with other priorities? Because I think it's all hitting that community development group. And so that, basically, that's one question, and that truly is, I'm, I'm interested in, because my understanding is that community development has spent a considerable amount of time working with restaurants and businesses downtown to, on that outdoor spaces, and I think it's been spectacular. I am concerned about, at this point, just how we are spending our resources. And then also, so what is involved if we do have a third-party organization that's nonprofit that will run it? Just what does that mean? What is, you know, are we, how long will we? How long will these permits be? We have, we don't know any information about this, so it seems just so premature at this point to be proceeding. Obviously, it's wonderful to be helping the businesses. I think that there's also other businesses that may want it. One thing that I've heard is that we're so focused on restaurants and, hey, what about us retail and other businesses? So just how do we do this, especially if we increase the design standards? You know, the money, how far will the money go? How do we equitably distribute it? What happens to the groups that have already spent their own money? Just I, I really hesitate to jump into a program without having more information. But it's about, about how the impact on staff.
Well, this is one of the things that we talked about with staff as a subcommittee, and it's why we, we wanted to bring in the, the nonprofit, but then you get chicken and an egg. It's, it's odd to come to a nonprofit, and, and I don't want to name yet because they haven't agreed. We haven't, it's very difficult to talk about setting something up when, when you don't have the money to set something up in the first place. It's, it becomes chicken and egg. There is a nonprofit who's interested in, in helping administer this so that it is minor draw on, on staff, for the very reasons you, you brought up. We have the same concerns.
Councilmember Mueller?
I was just going to make the same, the same observation, and that's that we, we wouldn't be approving actually any, any of what those design standards would look like, or even which businesses would get them. We'd be setting aside a budget allocation so that staff could go ahead and begin their work, and then they would actually be bringing back reports to us based upon that work for us to approve at a later date. So we're just, we're creating the budget allocation for them to start on that process tonight.
Councilmember Nash?
So, again, how mu, what does $100,000 do? How much does the nonprofit need to get started? How much, you know, I, I just would love to support it, and I just feel very uneasy about it. And when you're saying that we, we need to get these questions answered, is that city staff answering those questions? I would assume that city, that city has to be involved in these decisions. And also, at what point do we have, you know, how many parklets is, you know, thriving, and how many starts to be too many and impact circulation and/or just other businesses? So I guess I'd love to get some, just some answers from, you know, you seem to be very excited, and I'd love to catch that excitement, and I'm, you know, how do you envision this?
So first, first of all, we hadn't, we hadn't talked about making the designs, changing the design standards, making them more strict. We were talking about basically taking the program as it was before and saying this worked and giving it to the nonprofit and letting them administer that. If, if we start completely changing things, that can be how long as a piece of string? Because then, at, at, to what level are we changing it? Meanwhile, the rains come, nobody's covered. It's, it's, it's really critical. These people really, these businesses really need help. And last time we did this, that I don't believe there's anyone downtown other than in the, the tents recently put up because of COVID. Everyone was part of the program before they got the funding from the city. Talk about equity. It's the, the people recently that haven't got the funds matching from the city. And that, that's what's frustrated them quite a bit. But when you ask how much, I, I think we would sit down and we talked about four or five, not a lot. Last time we had one retail store and all the rest were restaurants. There might be a retail store that wants to do it as well. We have to see who applies. But we, if we don't have the, you have to start with the money and the budget to say, yes, we sincerely want to do this, to start moving forward. And, and when you say you want to, to change the standard, what Roma built has got multi-layers in concrete. It's very different than what Left Bank built, you know, so then I, so I don't really understand what you mean by, by raise the standard. Right now, I'm more concerned about the same standard, just getting in there, just being able to, to allow them to have people be able to dine in a place. I, I've eaten in one place and honestly, it gave me a backache because the whole table was sideways because we're sitting in the street like this. You know, they, they need to have the foundation, and they're going to need to be covered. And right now, what is being covered, the, the city is very nicely being very lenient. It's not up to code. And it's not in, in any inclement weather terribly safe or usable if we end up with the real rainstorms and, and things that we know that happen in the, in the winter. So I think we take a step back, and the original intention was to basically relit something very similar to the thing we did before, very similar to, to the program that we know works. And if we want to up, upgrade it, I, I wouldn't start reinventing the wheel right now. Sorry, Ray, you've got your hand up.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so I'm not talking about reinventing the wheel, guys. It's about finishing, just finishing standards on it. I mean, there's, I mean, obviously, the way the parklet, you, there's only so much space you would put a parklet, and there's only so much way you could level it. But the strong feedback that I've heard from constituents is they're unhappy with some of the finishing quality and of one compared to another. I don't think that, I think it's conjecture to rule out looking at that. I think it's something that we could ask staff to look at and report back on as they put together their, they put together their reports on this issue. I, I wouldn't say that tonight, that by having them look at that would be, that it was going to be something terrible or throw a thing off kilt. I think it would just be something for them to look at and go, okay, well, this is, if you wanted to go ahead and improve the finishing standard, this is how you would do it. And I've, I've heard that very strongly from, from residents. But if you guys don't want to do that, that's fine. We don't have to ask, ask staff to look back and come back with a recommendation on it. It's not, you know, we can look at it at a later date. But I, I definitely, before COVID-19, I definitely was hearing that and was hoping it would be something that we would be addressing in terms of the infrastructure upgrades to downtown, including all of the other just brick and mortar infrastructure improvements that need to happen. And so my only point was if we're going to go through this process and start investing money and again in it, if there's a way that staff can look at that and make some suggestions around that, that I think, because obviously, they've learned from it, and we've all learned from it from watching it the way it was implemented, they can make those suggestions at this time. We could give them that feedback. So I, again, I think it's conjecture to say it's going to grow everything off kilt. I think we just have to ask them then, tell them to move on to look at it. But regardless, I also would point out, I'm not sure how far $100,000 is going to go. I, I think that the, the last time we did this project, I don't, I think the grants were, I think the grants were like $20,000 in that range. Yeah, so I'm not sure, but I'm not sure how far, I'm not just sure, I'm, I'm not sure how far it's going to go. So, and it might have been more, actually. So.
Think about, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, it's fine. So I, I just, like, I just, my, my point is this, like, if we want to do it, I think we just set aside some money. We ask staff to come back, give us a budget, tell us what they think they can do. And if they can't do it within that budget, it can't be done. If there's things that we don't like about the staff report, we don't do it. But basically, we're just setting aside budget tonight and saying, go forth and bring us back a plan.
Well, may, may I respond to that?
Yes.
Um, I, I actually agree with you. But, and, and think about this. All of these restaurants, and I'm picking on restaurants because that's who I'm talking to, and that's, that's who's in the hole right now, because they can't have people come in shopping inside at the same level. And they're going to be doing this anyway. The, the administration is, is, is who gets the funds. They're going to be, I hope they are, because if they don't, they're going out of business. And so the staff is going to be doing the work of working with them on, on approving what they're building anyway. The, the extra work is just the admin for the cash, and that's what the, the nonprofit can bring in to do. But whether it's Carpatio or, or Refuge or Ann Anne's or, or whatever restaurant, Baskin Robbins. If, if they intend to do it, they're, they're applying for the permit. They're finally hopefully getting the permit and getting it to, to safe standards. And that's going to happen with or without the cash, or they go out of business. So that, the extra work that I'm, that I'm talking about here is the admin of matching some funds, and that's what the third party can do.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton.
Not necessarily how much time is it going to take, it's how much extra time it's going to take.
Councilmember Nash?
So actually, first comment is Palo Alto and Redwood City, and perhaps other cities may have templates that we want to use, that we don't have to reinvent it. I know that Palo Alto, I've been told, there have been restaurateurs who have pointed to Palo Alto as having a very robust good program as far as what the standards are, so that may be a place to look as well, which I'm sure our community development department knows about. But what I would like to hear from is either City Manager Jerome Robinson or Ms. Chow, to hear what they believe the implications are for staff, because I, I am concerned that we will be not only, that we are just increasing their work, and I would like to know what are, you know, what is going to give. They are asking for more staff because they can't handle what they're doing, or because they're, not that they can't handle, but they've got more work than they can handle. And now we are adding additional work to them. And I guess the other piece is, does that, if we hand it off to a third party and we are now providing money, does that mean we are no longer going to be as involved with moving the barriers around, providing barriers? And the, you know, fee waivers? Is there, or are we, just what are the parameters again? But going back to if the city manager could come on and just give a perspective on the staffing and resourcing, please.
Thank you. I, I think, well, we've had a lot of ideas tonight, and I'm not sure which one I'm supposed to respond to, but maybe the most productive piece here would be for us, for I and Assistant City Manager Nick Pogaros and some of the rest of the team to meet with Mayor Taylor and Councilmember Carlton, where this idea germinated, and really flesh out some of the details and give it a more, a deeper conversation, and then come back again at a future meeting. My only hesitation about that idea is that, given our agendas, that probably won't be till January, but we'll, we'll try and figure out the best that we can do. And if we can do it more quickly, we will. But if I could raise one more question, I, I know that you're probably ready to move off of this item tonight. But we do have a very modest request in here of about $10,000 for economic development consulting. And that could also be a valuable assistance to us as we look at the Street Cafe program and other options. And we, we included the proposed contract. So I think when we published the agenda, we should have also asked for contract authority up to And we, we included the proposed contract. So I think when we published the agenda, we should have also asked for contract authority up to $150,000. We can fund this program through salary savings for the economic development position. But as we know, my, my signature authority only goes up to 78,000. So if you're supportive of us moving forward with this consultant, and I, I think it is a great opportunity to work with them, then I would just ask you to consider giving me the authority to sign the contract and the additional appropriation of $9,000 tonight.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So could you clarify in the budget for the expenditure amount? I'm, we're talking about reference 13. The amount is 800, $8,553. I see on the Econ Solutions, it's 148,000. So is this again, the discrepancy between what was budgeted before and, anyway, could you please explain?
We would be using the salary savings from the vacant management analyst who was dedicated to economic development and we would be short about that $9,000. So we have funding except for the $9,000.
Can I follow up? And so the request would be on this one item is, is her city manager can't sign the contract because she doesn't have the signing authority and then it's also short on the budget by the $9,000.
Right. But I, I really believe this will be a big win and it, you know, it may be a, a one-year contract, but I think this would be a great opportunity for us to get some real subject matter expertise into our organization. We can learn from them and I think it would be great to develop, they'll develop some reports for us on the downtown and then hotspots throughout town. I, I think there's a lot of value in this contract.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Um, thank you. I guess two comments. One is, obviously it would, this is where it would be really helpful to see what was in the budget already, to know that it was the 140 plus the 9,000, which, and I am fully supportive of this and I actually would feel much more comfortable proceeding with the downtown, the down, outdoor dining grant program, if it were to be reviewed and approved, you know, and recommended or somehow that this economic development person would somehow agree that this is, makes sense and looking, there would be some staff work to know that how many years out we can go because we're also committing to letting these programs exist for a while. And at the same time, we're doing a review of our housing and our downtown plan. Well, I'm sure we'll be involved in that housing and just, so how do all these pieces fit together? And so I actually would like to move that we go ahead with this economic development person and that it's actually tied to, although I realize it slows it down, tied to the downtown outdoor dining grant program.
I'll, I'll second that. I don't necessarily think it's going to slow things down. I think it will, I think it will actually help expedite it. I haven't met this person before, but I've heard fabulous things about this person and I know I have heard that people from the chamber board are, are also very excited about having this person available to support them in the work that they're doing. So I, I'm happy to second that.
And could, could I ask that you also give me signature authority on the contract for up to 150,000?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Nash and a second by City Councilmember Carlton to approve the economic development position and approving the signing authority for the city manager for up to 150,000. Is there any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Figueros has his hand up.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure that we're using the right reference number. So the rec, the, as I understood the motion and the second, it is to move forward with, I should have the wrong staff report there. Okay. It's to move forward with the recommendation for the outdoor dining grant program and, which is on attachment B and the the downtown, or the Economic Development Initiative Reference Number 11.
Mr. Figueros, excuse me for a moment. I believe, I believe it was just the economic development consultant.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard dining in there. Okay. I apologize.
It was. It was for that, those funds and the economic development consultant.
Councilmember Nash, was that in your motion? I don't remember hearing that.
I'm sorry, it was not. It was that I will feel more comfortable moving ahead with that once that it's approved, it's recommended by the economic development person. But it, my motion was only to move for the economic development person and to give the city manager the signing authority for that person.
Oh, then I withdraw. I thought, I thought we were doing them together. So I, I feel, I, I cannot express to you how passionately I feel that we have to get the money and we have to start this program to support our, our, our businesses. We cannot wait till January. It will be too late. We, we have to start, we have to start getting this program going. I'm, I'm.
Councilmember Carlton, I, I share your concerns. And, and I, I believe one of the challenges now is just that, that it's late and trying to move through this budget item, which is not going to happen. And so since we're taking it in parts, let us do, let's do this one part around the economic development. This is coming back to us sooner than we think, which is next Tuesday, probably for our next council meeting. And so there's opportunity to include the piece that you're concerned about to make sure that that funding goes, goes to the downtown street cafes and, and the rest of the businesses that may want it. But just in light of the hour, I'm willing to just do this piece because I know this is coming back to us within a week. And Councilwoman Mueller, you have your hand up.
Honestly, so I, and I appreciate where you are, Madam Mayor, and I actually agree, it's time for us to sort of wrap things up. But if Councilmember Carlton made the motion immediately after this motion on the, on the downtown, the downtown parklet project, I would, I would second it and just bring it to a vote and see if we could knock it out tonight.
I'm moved.
Well, let's vote on the first one first.
Okay. I'm happy to support the, the consultant. I, I, I know that Fran and, and a lot of people are excited to, to work with this person and I think that she's going to be good for our downtown.
Okay, Ms. Heron.
So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Nash pending a second regarding approval of the Economic Development Initiative and increasing city manager signing authority to 150,000 dollars, up to 150,000. So we would need a second on that one.
I, I second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. By roll, or is there any further city council discussion or questions? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. The second motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller, second by City Councilmember Carlton, is approval of the outdoor dining and street cafe program. Any further city council, sir? Any further city council discussion or question?
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I don't, how do we vote on something where we know nothing about the nonprofit? We know nothing about the finances of the nonprofit. There's just no information. So I'd be happy to support it at a future date when, you know, it could, I'd be happy to meet anytime to support something that I can see in front of me and I will let Ray talk.
The council, respectfully, Councilmember Nash, whenever we set budget at the beginning of the year, we don't know what those items are going to look like when they come to us. We set the budget and then staff prepares the reports based upon the priorities we put out on the budget we put out. And then after we get those reports, we approve them. So right now we're setting budget aside. Staff's going to prepare the reports, take direction from us and then we'll approve them. So I, I am, I, and I can confirm that right now, if City Manager Robinson, if you're there.
Yes, sir.
Before the $100,000, any of that $100,000 is spent, well, there'll be other reports for us to go ahead and prove what that, what that looks like.
Of course, we can come back. I mean, that can be a contingency on the authorization of the funds. So staff will return with a more detailed report on how it will be utilized.
Okay, so I'll put that in my motion.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the amended motion by City Councilmember Mueller, second by City Councilmember Carlton to approve the outdoor dining grant program and staff, directing staff to return reports on send.
Great. Okay.
Councilmember Nash?
I'm sorry, but, um, so are we approving the program or are we approving that it comes back to council? So it's that money is approved, but the program is not yet approved?
Great question.
We would not disperse any funds until the council approved the program.
Or the details of the program.
Details of the program, right. That, that was my understanding of the motion, but if it was different than that.
That was, yeah, that was my motion was this, we're putting some money in the budget, you're going to come back, the professional staff's going to come back with a staff report. We're going to approve that for any money spent on the program.
We, the way we do it for most things that we budget.
So there'll, there'll be no money spent until we've looked at what the details are of it and approve it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Just for clarification in the motion, I'm going to reread it one more time. Motion by City Councilmember Mueller, second by Carlton, approving the outdoor dining grant budget and directing staff to return reports before any spend. Any further city council questions or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And at this time, Starla Jerome Robinson, can you come back out? Just saw, or Mr. Figueroa, sorry. I didn't know you were coming out first, but just wanted to follow up with you. So we will not continue the items on the list of recommendations on, on J2. I would like to move to J3 because it needs to be approved this evening. So Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson or Mr. Figueros, I'm looking to you for some direction on doing that.
That's fine. We, we understand the actions that the council has taken tonight and will bring, we'll look for an opportunity to bring the other items back as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Just, Madam Mayor, if I may, just one clarification, if we would, we do need the, in order to offset the approved budget expenditures, we need to amend the revenue budget, which is attachment E to the staff report, property tax, the sales taxes, et cetera. So if the council could move to approve that as amended to remove the $2 million transfer from general funds to the Menlo Park Community Campus Fund, then we will have a balance, everything that you approved will be balanced by, offset by revenue.
You might have to repeat that, Mr. Figueros.
Judy, may I please, may I please have the screen? So we are, we do need city council approval to offset the, to amend the revenue budget as well. And so this is the revised revision, this is the revision with property taxes, sales taxes, et cetera. And this would offset the increases that were just approved.
Councilmember Nash?
Shouldn't the number for use of assigned fund but balance transfers out under the expenditures be 1.56 rather than 1.58?
Yes, that was the typo that Dan caught. I guess 1.5, 1.56.
Okay. Is anyone, does anyone on council not support amending the budget? Okay, so Mr. Figueros, you will help us do a motion here?
I might be of some assistance. We could do by acclamation, the city council approved removing 1.56 from the general fund and placing it into the Menlo Park Community Center Fund, order to bound budget. And just clarifying that with Nick, thumbs up. Fabulous. So city council's comfortable, I can do that just by acclamation.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm sorry. It's a budget amendment. It does require council action. So the motion would be to approve the non-departmental amendments as detailed in attachment E, attachment E.
Is there a motion?
So, Mr. Figueros, the only challenge is that what's on attachment E and what's on the screen is different.
Yes, and that was because we amended it to take out the $2 million transfer from general funds, the MPCC project. And Mr. Jacobson corrected me that it, that his, the number that is struck, struck out was a typo. So 1.58 is correct.
Just so you, the lens that I have at the moment, at 10:30, so it, it just, it doesn't look the same. So when you say attachment E, I feel like I'm approving the whole sheet as opposed to what's on the screen, but I'm not.
We can preface it with the attachment E in the presentation. That is clear.
That works for me.
Perfect. So is there a motion to approve non-departmental amendments as opposed to an attachment E in the presentation?
I'll make the motion.
And second by City Councilmember Carlton. Any further city council discussion or questions? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Before we move on, I know we are anxious. Assistant City Manager Figueros, is there anything further that is required of the staff on the entirety of J2?
No, thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, is item J3, which is to adopt Resolution 6598, approving the Town of Atherton's withdrawal from the South Bayside Waste Management Authority. Councilmember Mueller?
Madam Mayor, may I make a motion that we, that we waive the staff report and move directly to motion?
Yes, please.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt Resolution 6598, approving the Town Atherton withdrawal from the South Bayside Waste Management Authority pursuant to the terms. pursuant to the terms indicated in the staff report, or recommended in the staff report.
Councilmember Mueller, it looked like there was a second by City Councilmember Nash, is that correct? Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller, second by City Councilmember Nash, adopting Resolution Number 6598, approving the Town of Atherton withdrawal from the SPWM. Any further city council discussion or questions? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Oh, you know what we didn't do is take public comment on item. So although we have taken the vote, Mayor Taylor, may I call for public comment and, um, ending public comment response to city council may discuss further?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So if any member of the public wishes to comment on item J3 regarding the Town of Atherton withdrawal from the SPWM, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. You'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the city council at this time. Is there a final call for any public comment on item J3? Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is informational items, and since no one from the council pulled it, Ms. Heron, can you call for public comment on this item?
Yes, so if any member of the public wishes to speak on any of our information items, which just contains city council agenda topics, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. This will be the final call for any public comments on item K1, the council agenda topics. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on the agenda is city manager reports. Um, and Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson, do we have any reports from you?
Good evening, good evening again, Mayor. We do have a couple of quick reports. Uh, as you know, the city manager is responsible for making an appointment to the Housing Innovation Fund. I wanted to take this opportunity to announce that I have appointed Pam Jones to the fund and look forward to hearing reports from her. Secondly, I think there is significant community interest in the police chief recruitment. So I wanted to report out tonight that we have completed, or almost completed, the RFP process for a recruiter for the next police chief, and will be moving into the recruitment phase i- in the near future. So, those are my reports tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And the last item on the agenda are city council member reports. Are there any reports from a city council member? Councilmember Carlton?
Um, for those of you who haven't seen, uh, Recology is doing a coat drive for kids, and remember, this is also high school kids. So, um, uh, if you have a coat that you would like to donate that's gently worn, you can put it in a plastic bag, you can label it so, and put it out, uh, either on top of your thing or, or at the side when they're doing the pickup, and the driver will come pick it up and take it inside and make that donation for you to help the people have, uh, good coats as we move into the cold weather.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Does anyone else have a report out? Okay, no report outs from anyone else. Well, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.